Welcome to Bellevue City Council Meeting for Monday, April 3. Let's do a roll call first. City Clerk, you ready for the roll?
Yes, thank you. Mayor Robinson.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Newman House.
Here.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
Councilmember Robertson.
Here.
And Councilmembers on.
Here.
Thank you.
Terrific. Councilmember Zahn, could you lead us in the flag salute, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And justice for all.
All right. We have two proclamations this evening. First one is the Autism Acceptance Month proclamation, which I've asked Councilmember Lee to read this evening. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to read the following proclamation. Whereas people with autism contribute to the neurodiversity of the world, enhancing our communities, schools, workplaces, neighborhoods, and places of worship. And whereas according to the World Health Organization, it is estimated that worldwide about 1 in 100 children is diagnosed with autism. The prevalence of children with autism is likely much higher due to persistent and significant barriers to resources, including diagnosis, especially for members of marginalized communities. And whereas studies estimate 50 to 75% of the identified 5.6 million adults with autism in the United States are unemployed or underemployed. And whereas people with autism, especially those who are also people of color or LGBTQ+ are still excluded from full access to employment, housing, education, and medical care. And they are also frequently excluded from formulating research and policy that affect them. And whereas early identification autism and equitable support in every stage of life allows people with autism to live independently, fully participate in their communities, and live fulfilling lives of dignity and opportunity. And whereas people with autism are friends, family members, children, partners, coworkers, customers, and neighbors, and the voice and lived experience of people with autism should be centered in any discussion or decisions that impact them. And whereas the city of Bellevue recognizes the right of people with autism and the ways they enrich our communities with their life experience, the city supports efforts to promote acceptance of individuals with autism, provide information and resources, and foster inclusive practices. Now therefore, I currently, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim April 2023 as Autism Acceptance Month in Bellevue and encourage community members to celebrate people with autism and recognize their valuable contributions to our world.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Lee. I believe that Joyce St. Germain, our city's, the city's Human Resources Director and a member of the city's Disabilities Allyship Resource Team, or DART, as it's usually referred to, here on behalf of the Employee Resource Group to accept the proclamation. And Joyce, you want to say a few words and then let's do a quick picture afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newman House, and members of the City Council. I'm Joyce St. Germain, and I'm honored to accept this proclamation on behalf of the Disabilities Allyship Resource Team, which is one of three employee resource groups at the city. The city of Bellevue has made many efforts to improve inclusion and access for persons with disability, including decades-long history of providing adaptive recreation programs at the Highland Community Center and sponsoring the Supported Employment Program based on the values of full inclusion and access. The council's support of disability awareness and acceptance is very meaningful to the work we do, making us a more attractive and inclusive employer. Thank you, City Council. Happy Autism Acceptance Month.
Our second proclamation this evening is Distracted Driving Awareness Month, and I've asked Councilmember Stokes to read that one this evening.
Hey, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Whereas traffic crashes involving distracted driving injure more than 700 people on an average day and have an economic toll exceeding $95 billion in the U.S. annually. And whereas in 2022, 28 people were involved in a fatal or serious injury crash in Bellevue, including some that involved distracted driving and talking on a mobile phone, even in hands-free mode, texting, programming a GPS device, and many other distracting activities can divert your attention away from driving. And whereas Bellevue residents and all people deserve to live in communities that promote safe driving behaviors and healthy lifestyles. And whereas preventing distracted driving injuries and deaths requires the cooperation of all levels of government, business, nonprofit organizations, educational opportunities, and the public. And whereas the city of Bellevue works to support safe system policies, practices, and procedures which establish principles and best practices for increased safety on roads across the transportation system. And whereas Bellevue's Vision Zero effort strives to eliminate serious injury and fatal collisions on the city streets by 2030. And whereas as the weather warms, more people are walking and rolling and, that must be maybe on wheels, and is in parity to focus attention on ways to prevent traffic crashes. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim April 2023 as Distracted Driving Awareness Month in Bellevue and urge all residents to intentionally practice safe driving behaviors and pledge to drive distraction-free this month and all year long. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Stokes. And I should have mentioned at the top of the meeting that the mayor is with us. She's just participating remotely this evening, if you can't tell or you don't see her on the screen there, but hopefully you do. So I just wanted to mention that. But since that, there's some challenges running the meeting virtually, I'm running the meeting this evening. So with that, do I have an approval of the agenda, please?
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next, let's do oral communications, please. City Clerk, are there any speakers signed up to provide oral communications this evening?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. There are actually 18 speakers signed up or pre-registered this evening. Before I start calling names, I'll go over a few of the rules. Oral comms is permitted for a time period to last no longer than 30 minutes. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to speak, and only three speakers can speak to any one side of a particular topic. In addition, since we do have more than 30 minutes worth of sign-ups, the chair, which is the deputy mayor this evening, is authorized to give preference to speakers speaking to items on the agenda this evening or that'll come in front of the council within the next month. Additionally, I need to make a notification to everyone that in compliance with Washington State Public Disclosure laws, the use of public facilities during elections is not allowed, and no election-related topics may be discussed during oral communications. This includes discussion of ballot measures, endorsement of candidates or political parties, and speaking on behalf of a campaign, including your own campaign. Any speaker who begins discussing topics of this nature may be given a verbal warning as this is considered a disruption to our meeting and may be asked to be removed from council chambers. And with that, I will call our first speaker, who is Garangi Gupta.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Garangi Gupta, and I'm a seventh grader. I want to take this opportunity to thank the mayor of Bellevue and the other council members for giving me this opportunity to speak and share about my program called Youth for Us. During the pandemic, everything was shut down, and there was no volunteering opportunities for kids. This led to the idea of Youth for Us, where I can take my passion forward to promote literacy and community giving with the goal of kids helping kids. This program started with a porch pickup and DIY activities, keeping COVID safety in mind, where kids can pick up the DIY kit, work at home, and then drop it back, which then gets donated to various communities. After a few months, I got a lot of interest from many kids who wanted to be a part of my program and support Youth for Us. Sadie is one of our newest members who is here today and helps us with our various community activities. Thank you, Sadie. Today, I want to share my new initiative called the Three Rs: Reduce, Recycle, and Repurpose. The Three Rs initiative started with a visit to a restaurant where I got a box of crayons to color with. After dinner, I saw these crayons getting thrown away by the server after a short, one-time use. Suddenly, the question why springs to my mind. Why were these crayons getting thrown away? Why not reduce waste, recycle, and repurpose these crayons by recreating them with magic and love, but by also protecting the environment at the same time with the reducing of waste? After chatting with several restaurants, I found out that millions of crayons get wasted per year. Three Rs uses a six-step process. One, collect the used crayons. Two, sort them based off colors. Three, sanitize and melt them. Four, create a new crayon design. Five, repackage them into a new box. And six, distribute and donate them. So I reached out to several restaurants and explained to them about my idea and the six-step process. I am so happy that this initiative resonates with BJ's. They have partnered up with Youth for Us to kickstart this initiative and support this community give-back movement. The first collection process has already started, and we are donating our new produced crayons at All In for Autism 10K, 5K Run and Walk in Bellevue Downtown Park. The new leak-created crayons will be handed over to kids to raise awareness for kids and our autism spectrum disorder. The crayons look like this. The Three Rs crayons is very special. This initiative has already received a $500 grant from Hershey's Heartwarming Young Hero. Youth for Us has many other free programs, like the Children Business Fair, which is our all-time favorite.
Ms. Gupta? I'm sorry, your time is expired. If you would like to email the rest of your comments to the council, I would encourage you to do so.
Yeah, I'm done. So, thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Robinson, for inviting them down to tell us this incredible organization that you started up. So best of luck to you, and please do email all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker on the list is Court Olson.
Good evening, council. Good to see you all again. I want to tell you all a little bit about my neighborhood that I live in. It's a great place to live. We've got small houses, big houses, older houses, newer houses. We've got a diversity in backgrounds, got people of all ethnicities, all ages, lots of kids running around. Your ideal American neighborhood, I think. And one thing we all have in common is we really love Airfield Park and the woods that are right next to our neighborhood. And we're actually in support of everything that the Parks Department and the Parks Board wants to do up there in that park in the grassy area, which is a dominant area of the park. All we're asking is leave the woods alone. We enjoy that woods 24/7. At night, we hear the coyotes howling occasionally. We hear the hoots, we hear the frogs. We know what's going on there. And in the daytime, when we're walking through the park, as most of us do pretty frequently, we run into an animal or two now and then. I've seen possum, I've smelled skunk, I've run into deer, walking my dog as startled as I was. We see all kinds of birds, ducks, and occasionally geese and blue herons and so forth. It's really a mini wildlife sanctuary, believe it or not. We don't see those kinds of things when we're walking in other parks like Robbinswood. And that's because all of the trails, and there are a lot of trails, are skirting around the edges of the woods, so the interior of the woods are preserved. So our comments tonight, our request to you, is please ask the Parks Board to reconfigure what they have in mind in their concept too, which is the popular plan that's showing what most people want. We're in favor of it. I am a civil engineer and project manager by background. I've done a lot of municipal projects. So I took it upon myself to do an analysis of the boundary survey. And everything they want to do, which you can see in the handouts that I sent you and that are sitting in front of you tonight, everything they want to do up there could be done if they just utilized the 140 parking stalls that the city bought from Boeing when they bought that park rather than ignore that parking capability. That's what we're asking for. Sure would appreciate you asking the Parks Board and the Parks Department to just reconfigure what they've got up there. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. The next speaker is Alexandra Cagiano.
Hi, thank you. My name is Alex Cagiano, and I am a lawyer who lives in the Spirit Ridge area. I've called Bellevue my home for 30 years, actually. I've grown up here my whole life. And in August, I'm going to be expecting my first child, and I'm excited to raise him here as well in this beautiful neighborhood that has, is all I've known and all I would want for him to know. And I'm here to also ask that you preserve Airfield Park. I would go further and ask to also preserve the open spaces. I would quote our own Mayor Robinson, who has talked about how important open spaces are, and where she recognized, I have to find it in my notes because I have a little bit of pregnancy brain, but she's recognized our green spaces foster community and pay dividends in well-being. And similarly, the United States EPA has said that these open spaces help communities protect their environment, improve quality of life, and preserve critical elements of the local heritage, culture, and economy. Right now, we're on the cusp of catastrophic climate change, and we can't fix it alone, but preserving open spaces like the ones that we have is so important and vital for our community. And we can do it with this step of preserving Airfield Park. I walk there daily with my dog. I've gotten to know the community in Spirit Ridge by going to this park every single day. I see other people with their family members. This last weekend, I saw Dad teaching his daughter how to ride her bike there, and I just recognize the importance of keeping the park as it is. And so I would just ask for you guys to realize that there's other feasible alternatives for putting a pool somewhere else. I spoke back and forth with Councilmember Robertson about her interest in having public access to pools, which I can recognize is important as well, but I think that there's feasible alternatives in, maybe in Robbinswood Park, which has already been developed, in other developed areas. There's the two new, or the two newly closed elementary schools that need a new purpose. So I would just ask that the council consider not having it at Airfield Park. I was first informed about the efforts of my eight-year-old neighbors who were against this development 10 years ago, and I'm just trying to help continue their fight for my future family, for our neighborhood, and for the people who will be impacted by this. So thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker on the list is Kaylee Wong.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newman House, and council members. My name is Kaylee Wong, and I live in Somerset in Bellevue, Washington. Thank you for this opportunity to share my story and why it's so important to me that a new Bellevue Aquatic Center be located at Bellevue Airfield Park. I'm a junior at International School, and I've swam three seasons with Newport High School and six seasons with Bellevue Club Swim Team. In the summer of 2021, I became a certified lifeguard through the Splash Forward's High School Lifeguard Training Program, and I got my first job at the Somerset Rite Club, which is where I've worked for the past two summers now. Outside of swimming, I'm working on creating a water safety curriculum for middle schoolers at my school to earn my Girl Scout Gold Award, which is the highest award a Girl Scout can earn. I've also been a high school volunteer with Splash Forward for one year now, and I've helped develop a modified lifeguard program for those with special needs. Susan's also my project advisor for my Gold Award, and she's been an amazing resource so far. First, I will share what swimming means to me and why it's so important that everyone has access to such an important life skill. It's a fact that learning to swim reduces the risk of drowning by 88%, and I can personally attest this figure. I vividly remember a time before I joined a swim team and before my swimming skills were strong, when I went to a pool party. As all my friends swam around me, I held onto the wall, too scared to swim out, even in the shallow four-feet water with a lifeguard present. Even now, after spending over half my life swimming, I still remember how petrified I was at the thought of leaving that wall and just drowning in the middle of the pool. At the time, I was taking swim lessons, and I could physically swim across the pool, but what I lacked was the confidence in myself to do so. I believe a new Bellevue Aquatic Center at Bellevue Airfield Park will be a great benefit to students and families because it creates accessible opportunities for people to learn to swim and to develop the confidence that they need because, you know, like I said, it's not just learning to swim, but it's having the confidence in yourself. It'll also allow students interested in swimming to pursue their interests because, as a student swimmer, I know it takes a lot of commitment that not all families can commit to. Club swimmers like me have to travel as far as in a homeish and federal way to go to big competition pools, and high school swimmers have to drive to Mary Way on Mercer Island for meets that start as late as 8:00 PM and go as late as 11:00 PM. As students, high school athletes need to prioritize both their sleep schedule and their commitments to their sport, and a Bellevue Aquatic Center at Bellevue Airfield Park would be the perfect solution to these needs. Thank you so much for helping us bring an aquatic center to Bellevue at Bellevue Airfield Park. It's going to create so much opportunity and convenience for families in Bellevue, and having an accessible place to learn to swim and practice water safety skills would create a much safer community for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Susan Papalardo.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson, and Deputy Mayor Newman House, and council members. My name is Susan Papalardo, and I live and play, or sorry, I work and play in Bellevue, and I'm the co-founder and president of Splash Forward. Thank you for this opportunity to share our support for the Park Board's recommended master plan for Bellevue Airfield Park. That includes the Aquatic Center Concept Plan. An aquatic center builds community and bridges our diversity while offering essential life skills. The struggle to find swim lessons, programming, and pool space result in a community with lower aquatic competence and higher risks of drowning. Bellevue is more diverse than ever. 64% of Black children, 45% of Latinx children, and 66% of Asian children, adult and adults, don't know how to swim. Learning to swim, no matter your age, as Kaylee said, decreases the risk of drowning by 88%. This month, pools locally and across the U.S. hold April Pools' Day events to raise water safety awareness. And right now, city swim lessons are not being offered due to staffing shortages, and the waitlist for swim lessons is almost two years long, meaning children and adults across the region are at more risk of drowning. To help address our local staffing shortages, we are working actively to build both a lifeguard and swim instructor pipeline through our high school lifeguard training program and community partnerships. A community aquatic center is a year-round amenity. At a time when our public schools are seeing shrinking enrollment, we need to invest in amenities that keep families in Bellevue. We envision a future where not only aquatic sports and recreation have an indoor year-round home, but where water safety incompetence are an integral part of the curriculum, making public schools the number-one choice for families. A community aquatic center has something for everyone. Putting it in a park with other park elements multiplies the indoor and outdoor benefits and synergies. When people connect in park spaces, their social sense of place, value, and identity are formed, creating community. The physical layout of today's Airfield Park as a wooded and open space suggests how to balance the location of park elements. Through both city and Splash Forward community engagement and our own survey with over 100 responses, the top active and passive elements and uses show an aquatic center, pickleball, trails, woods, picnic spaces, playgrounds, and community gardens. All of these make for fully activated park that meets the needs of the widest range of park users and one like no other. It also calls us to strive for environmental sustainability goals that improve the site and create opportunities for excellence in development and design. We have created a one-page, early environmental sustainability vision, which we will share with you, and we look forward to continuing our partnership with the city during the environmental study phase and building early partnership and funding conversations. As a roughly $50 million private fundraising partner, Splash Forward is preparing our organization and actively developing the partnerships required to build and program a sustainable new Bellevue Aquatic Center. Thank you for your ongoing support to ensure equitable access to places to play, restore, and connect in Bellevue.
Thank you. The next speaker is Kate Sinan.
Excuse me. Good evening. I'm Kate Sinan, and I'm here again representing many in our community who oppose the development in the meadow at Airfield Park. I went to the city's Environmental Stewardship Initiative Town Hall last Wednesday, and I was really pleased to hear that the city goal is to lower greenhouse gas emissions by 50% by 2030 and 80% by 2040. Aggressive goals are especially important because latest predictions estimate that the whole federal carbon budget will be completely exhausted anywhere between 1.7 to seven years. Those are startling numbers. With this in mind, I asked if there wasn't a disconnect between their stated goals and the city's plan to develop the Wildlife Meadow Corridor at the Airfield Park. As I men, oh, excuse me, bit my tongue. As I mentioned at the Parks Board meeting, wild spaces mediate effects from deadly thermal events like those we've experienced over the last two summers. If they are developed, we are in effect creating double loads by eliminating the natural landscape while increasing structures that absorb and then re-emmit heat, the sun's heat. In addition, the extensive and extremely expensive cleanup that will be required to build at the meadow will include the removal of tons of earth and, in turn, the release of any remaining methane that has been trapped underground from the old landfill site and back into the atmosphere. It's kind of like asbestos. If you don't disturb them, they're fine. But if you disrupt the ground, the methane is released into the atmosphere. So I wonder how this project can be justified or environmentally sensitive as the city's presentation states. Based on your own information, especially in that it will destroy the very environmental factors that mediate the worst effects of climate change. Unfortunately, the speakers were unable to give any type of satisfactory response, I think because there isn't one. As I urged the last time I spoke before you, the City Council needs to look into other options for their development. Economic conditions have changed. There will be three elementary schools closing, and there are countless business buildings that are now standing empty. It would be much more in line with the city's own environmental goals to reassess and choose an already urbanized site. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker on our list is Heidi Dean. Ms. Dean is joining us virtually. Can you hear me?
I sure can.
Okay, thank you. Your time begins now.
Thank you, St. Germain. Good evening, council members.
Thank you, Sharmeen. Good evening, council members, and coming to you from Newport Hills tonight, and I wanted to, I'm speaking about one of your consent calendar items, Resolution 10242. On behalf of myself and the Newport Hills neighborhood, I wanted to thank you for offering up the funds to purchase the property owned by Sacred Hearts, Sacred Heart, Sacred, anyways, you know what I mean, Forest Ridge School of Sacred Heart, to be able to complete the trail connection with Woodlawn Park. That was something that the original park committee for the Woodlawn Park had envisioned all the way back to 2012, and so I wanted to thank you for that, making that happen. I wanted to thank Cameron Parker in the Parks Department for his work on that. I know that several of my neighbors have been working with him, so I wanted to acknowledge him. I wanted to acknowledge Michelle Hillhorst, my neighbor, my friend, and the chair of the Parks Committee when we were planning because it was Michelle that first identified the park property known as Woodlawn Park to the city, and then also she was instrumental in really pushing that idea of making that whole trail connection down to the park and ride. And then I also really wanted to thank my neighbors Matt Decker and Trish Brown, who had, they had their eyes open and spotted the sign when that property hit the market and notified the community club, and they've been working with the city, with Cameron and the county, and also with the, you know, had made some inquiries. So, you know, that was a community effort, and I appreciate that. I'm looking forward to the trail, once money is allocated, the trail being built, and the string of pearls being completed, if you will, from Newcastle Beach Park on up through Newport Hills and then over to the trails in the Coal Creek area and up through Somerset and beyond. So, if you can, you know, if you can find it in your budget someplace to do the same thing for the Save Coal Creek folks, I would be extremely grateful for that as well. Thank you again.
Thank you. I should have mentioned previously that with Ms. Sinan's comments, that was the third person in opposition or sharing concerns with the Airfield Park item. We can hear no further comment in opposition or sharing concerns on that topic. Our next speaker is Avi Yulstein, Alstein, thank you, who will be our third and final speaker in support of the Airfield item.
Hello, I'm Avi Alstein. I live in Phantom Lake View, which is about a block away from the Airfield Park. I lived in Bellevue most of my life. My friend, when he got his pilot's license, he said, "Hey, do you want to be my first passenger?" And so, we were in a Tomahawk two-seat aircraft that took off basically the old airfield in Eastgate, which was where the park is. And it's interesting how our values have changed. At one time, it was a garbage dump. People would just dump their garbage. And yet, here I am today listening to all these voices, and I agree with everybody here. Everybody here has a great opinion and reason for what they want to do, and I'm impressed. But I think what we need to do in life is compromise, and I would hope that we can go ahead and understand the greater public need. A pool would be a great idea, and I'm not against it, but the wildlife area, that green belt that's between the field and the neighborhood, there is a lot of wildlife that goes through there. I've seen owl, fox, all types of wildlife, and a lot of it is transitory. It's passing through. We've seen it where we have like a drought, and animals kind of migrate into the neighborhood looking for stuff. These are refuge places for these animals. And also, too, when you're walking in the morning and it's, there's dew in the air, and all of a sudden you see a rabbit, and then maybe you see a bobcat or a fox or something tear off after it, there's something magical about that. It's a quality of life that not everybody has. So, I really believe we can, maybe everybody won't walk away from the table here completely satisfied, but I think we can all kind of come halfway and have a kind of a modicum of understanding that there's a little bit of give and take we have to do. And if we can leave that green belt, it's connected to other green belts, and it's important for the wildlife, and leave it undeveloped. We don't need trails through it. We just can have it open. I hope that everybody would consider that because it won't cost the city any more money, and also, too, it adds to the quality of life, and it kind of tells us about our values, too, in Bellevue, what we, what we're trying to preserve, what part of the history, the old growth trees that we're trying to preserve in our city. So, thank you very much for your consideration, and that is my statement. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Johnny Liu.
And city clerk, that's three on each side now.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Mayor, deputy mayor, and city council members. So, first, thanks for letting me speak here, and I really appreciate this opportunity. My name is Johnny Liu. I'm a resident of Newport Hills and a longtime resident of Bellevue, and apparently, like everybody else here, I'm also here to talk about parks, but specifically the Newport Hills Park that's on the consent calendar. So, you know, I have a couple of points to make here, but they're all hugely in favor and in support of the resolution. I think it's 10242 to purchase the 5380 Lake Washington Boulevard property. So, anecdotally, I do a lot of gardening outside. I meet a lot of my neighbors through walks. You know, I think there's a really good feeling in the neighborhood when you meet neighbors on this kind of like nature walks or when you're going throughout the neighborhood, and I think that the extension that would get built out for the trail system in the area would be enormously helpful for the neighborhood to build, you know, more engagement and just kind of build up that neighborhood feeling to Newport Hills. So, you know, I really, I really think that that would be just a huge boost to the neighborhood. The second thing I wanted to give a shout out, I think Heidi mentioned a lot of them already, but the folks who were involved, Matt, Michelle, Heidi herself, as well as Trish, I think, you know, without the kind of active engagement, advocacy, and just the work that they do, this really wouldn't have been possible. So, I wanted to give a shout out to the kind of community folks and the leaders who are involved. I also want to shout out to the city staff. I know as somebody who's had to do a lot of diligence work, I know it's not very fun, but thank you for doing all the work that you do to kind of makes this happen, and also to the Parks Board for making this happen. So, just, you know, thank you for the community, all the leaders for coming together on this. My last thing is, you know, as we consider development of parks and specifically around Newport Hills and throughout Bellevue as well, I just want to encourage the thought of community gathering spaces as a priority for us. I think Newport Hills especially, we've struggled to have large gatherings outdoors. We have, you know, Newport Hills Park primarily a soccer field and a baseball field. We have Woodlawn Park recently opened, and there's a small gathering place there, but it's primarily a dog park. I would just think that, you know, the ability that we have to bring people together in a larger community gathering place would be a huge boon to the neighborhood, but also throughout Bellevue, I think as we, you know, want to enhance cultural events, local events, all of that. So, my request to the city council here would be if you're able to consider the development of these kind of larger community gathering spaces as you're thinking through the allocation of money from the Parks Grant. So, thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Thank you. The next speaker on the list is Irma Farsh, who I believe is joining us virtually, but Ms. Farsh, I do not see you by name. If you are connected, can you please raise your hand? Okay, I do not see Ms. Farsh, so I am going to go to our next speaker, who would be Christian Dorsett, who I believe was also joining us virtually, but I also do not see Mr. Dorsett connected. If you are connected, can you please raise your hand? Okay, moving on, Elaine Duncan, again, joining us virtually. Ms. Duncan, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you. Your time begins now.
Okay, my name's Elaine Duncan, and I live on Southeast 60th Street in Bellevue. I've lived here for 11 years and use the Bellevue Trails and King County Parks almost daily. My experience with these parks is that ever since the pandemic began, public usage has exploded, and it continues today to the point where parking lots are usually full on weekends and sunny days. I am here to support Save Coal Creek in opposing the development of the Park Point Isola PUD, which lies across the street from the County Redtown Trailhead and adjacent to Bellevue's Coal Creek Natural Area. This is not just any parcel along a busy road in Bellevue. It is a pristine island in the middle of natural areas. It is also unique in the historical place it fills in Bellevue's coal mining industry and history. I realize that approvals for this project are pending, so you don't have any decision before you right now, except one, the unique role you could and should have in purchasing this property for public parkland. If you have not already discussed this issue among yourselves and with your park staff, I urge you to do so. This parcel is unique. Preserving it as parkland would meet the policy goals of the Bellevue Comprehensive Plan to connect existing parks and to increase public access to those parks. As you know, available open space in Bellevue is rapidly disappearing to developers, and it is incumbent on you, the city council, to identify and meet the public need for parkland before it all disappears. This parcel's highest and best use is not to support another high-end housing development, but rather to be retained as a vital connection between two existing parks. Bellevue should take all steps necessary to preserve this parcel for future generations as parkland by facilitating its purchase by Bellevue. Thank you for listening to my views.
Thank you, and we have reached the 30-minute mark, then. We have heard from 10 speakers. I will note that, sorry, I won't go through over the names, Hope Barker, Leslie Wang, Kristy Murphy, Joe Kunsler, Allison McMullin, and Alex Zimmerman. Each, we were unable to hear from them this evening. I would encourage you to email the council at council@bellevuewa.gov.
And also, if you took the, excuse me, if you took the time to come down tonight just so the council can see you, if you came down to oppose or have some concerns about Airfield, can you just raise your hand and be seen? Thank you so much. And then those in favor of the Aquatic Center at Airfield Park, great. Thank you so much for being here. Thank you for being a part of the process. We really appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Zimmerman. Those are our, those are our rules. Our rules have been in place for quite some time. Mr. Zimmerman, this is your first verbal warning. You are disturbing our meeting right now. I'd ask you to please sit down. All right, let's move on with the agenda. Next, we're going to move to a report of the city manager, which I believe there are two items. Mr. City Manager, would you like to set that up?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and Deputy Mayor and council members. The first item is an update to the council on the eviction resolution pilot program, which is operated by Bellevue's Conflict Resolution Center. This update will relay and share information about the effectiveness of the program as well as highlights, highlight a number of the success stories. Joining us at the table are Mike McCormick, Assistant Director, as well as Marcy McReynolds, Conflict Resolution Center Manager, both from the Community Development Department. With that, I'm going to just hand it over to you, Mike.
Thank you, City Manager Miyaki. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, Council Member. Really is a pleasure being with you here tonight. As you're aware, Bellevue's Conflict Resolution Center has been on the forefront of response to serve Bellevue's community hardest-hit by this pandemic.
Mike, I'm going to have to stop you for a quick second.
Yeah.
Mr. Zimmerman, you're disturbing the meeting once again by talking to staff. Can you please have a seat? Thank you. Our policy's been very clear and in place for quite some time. So, if you can't sit down and be quiet, then we're going to have to have you removed. Thank you very much. Mike, so much, sorry about that for that interruption. Please continue.
One of the things that you're aware of tonight is that in 2021, the state created and funded the eviction resolution pilot program to operate from the end of the eviction moratorium, which was on November 1st, 2021, until June 30th, 2023, upcoming 23. And the Conflict Resolution Center operates the eviction resolution pilot program for the city of Bellevue and the city of Kirkland. So, tonight, we're going to provide an update on this program. The program is a state mandatory pre-court program. It means that landlords are first required to come to us first to attempt to negotiate a rental repayment plan with the tenant prior to going to court to file for an unlawful detainer or an eviction proceeding with the court. Since the program has began, we have seen over 2,600 cases come through our door. One of the things that's remarkable about this is that through connection with rent assistance and negotiation of rental repayment plans, we have seen the majority of these cases find successful resolution at 80% of the number of cases that are closed, and that means that they were resolved without an issuance of a certificate to advance to court. So, tonight, we're going to share more about our experience, some of where we are in this program, and what's going to happen next. So, to go into more detail, I want to introduce Marcy McReynolds, our Conflict Resolution Center Manager. Marcy?
Hello. Thank you, Mike. Greetings, Mayor, up there, wherever you are, and council members. As Mike mentioned, the ERPP program, otherwise known as ERP, has ballooned our caseloads as well as our staff and our volunteer teams. We now have 15 staff and volunteers spread out virtually across the area who collectively work on ERPP cases. And I want to share some observations from our experience with the program with you tonight, other than what you have in the brief. First, the overall level of cases has not diminished. On average, we are still carrying an average of about 300 active cases at any given moment, sometimes 350. Tenants are still falling behind on their rent, and landlords are still actively trying to be made financially whole. We are seeing more tenants begin to default on their repayment plans even as new tenants enter the system. Anecdotally, we noticed that the most vulnerable tenants are people of color, particularly low-income immigrants, those struggling with mental illness and physical disabilities, our elders, and young families. Secondly, we know firsthand that rent assistance dollars make a huge difference. So, thank you for your generous decision to assign $7 million in ARPA funds, which have helped many landlords and tenants in Bellevue get whole and remain housed. Thank you. We've seen a collective $11.3 million in rent arrears since November 2021. This is an average of about $4,000 a case, which represents a couple of months of rent. However, there are some that are $400, and there are some that are $40,000. And I want to share this observation with you. When our team discovers that rent assistance dollars are being newly distributed to agencies after a hiatus, as recently happened, you will see our staff's messages on our team's board chat board just light up. If they could be heard, it would have, it would sound like the springtime cacophony of birds in the trees celebrating, "Oh, four of my tenants just got rent assistance, saving them from eviction just in the nick of time. Three of mine got it. Mine, too." Council members, you have made a huge difference in a lot of tenants and landlords' lives with that $7 million. So, thank you. Another observation, which is very gratifying as a mediation professional, is that this program has verified that the process of conciliation works. Conciliation is a shuttle diplomacy over the phone, working with one party at a time, which is different from mediation, which has all parties sit down together. It works because it balances power between the landlord and the tenant, providing a safe place for each party to communicate their interests and needs. And it works because we help parties build problem-solving skills and self-determination in times of crisis. And another observation of why our program has worked is that we collaborate and build bridges. We built relationships across safety nets within our, with our community partners, people with rent assistance, the legal community, and within the city. with rent assistance, the legal community, and within the city. For example, Bellevue Fire Cares has helped a great deal with very vulnerable tenants who couldn't even fill out forms. They needed to get rent assistance. Our process helped preserve relationships between landlords and tenants, and built relationships between our staff and people in the multifamily housing community, relationships that we will build upon after the ERPP program sunsets June 30th. Bellevue's program, the only dispute resolution center in the state housed within a city government, has been an example to the state of how to use well-honed soft skills to help out in hard times. And I want to share this note from a tenant that we helped. Quote, "I just want to take a moment to thank you for helping many lives, especially those in my family. You have guided me on a course that should bring all of us back to a position of pride and happiness. I was down in the dumps and got a lift from someone acting as an angel, and you've saved my life. I did not have another answer. And even after the job was done, you still helped me secure February's payment when I ran short. Thank you again for saving me, my wife, and my two children." And some words from property managers. Since COVID, the rental world and its processes have been turned inside out, as you know. One item of stress for me professionally has been resident collections and navigating the ever-changing moratoria restrictions, procedures for collecting past due balances. My recent experience with Bellevue has helped alleviate a good portion of my anxiety. I found a conciliator who really made a difference for me. I declared my anxieties and procedural uncertainties. She not only listened, but has continued to guide me when questions arise. She has helped make me, make this, this complicated, top-heavy process more manageable for me. Another landlord said she heard that BRC, BCRC is very responsive, and you were proving it. And this is my final observation, is that it really takes a village. Finally, I wish to recognize the team of staff and community volunteers working behind in the shadows, who have put in enormous effort to serve our landlords and tenants. I wish to point to Jill Sulzberg, who's here. She is our ERPP coordinator. She's back there, who's worked very hard to try to assign a gazillion cases coming in rapid fire. And over this past year and a half, they've helped over 7,000 people remain housed and many landlords to remain whole. They often manage a high volume of caseloads, 50-plus at a time, on tight court-based timelines, while always placing first in their minds and hearts the humanity of the person in strife they are helping. And with that, I hand you over to Mike.
So finally, I just want to mention again, we do anticipate the eviction resolution pilot program will sunset on June 30th, 2023. So at that time, what's next is that the process for court filing for evictions or unlawful detainers are going to resume back to what they were like pre-pandemic. So we'll see that, that revert back to what it was. What it means for us as in the program is that we're still going to offer conciliation for negotiations on rent repayment plans to landlords and tenants now on a voluntary basis. Additionally, we're going to continue to promote where tenants can find rent assistance. We do anticipate that rent assistance dollars will continue to be available in 2023 and 2024, and all that information will be available on our city website as well. This fall, we will be writing a final report, looking back on the overall effectiveness of this program and the duration that it ran, and we will be posting that final report also on our city website as well. So with that, we want to thank you for your time tonight, and we'll conclude our report.
Thank you so much. Next item, Mr. Miyaki?
The second item on your agenda for, under the manager's report is, is I am seeking concurrence for an appointment to the Bellevue Convention Center Authority Board. I am appointing with the concurrence of the Council, Ousma Siddiki, to fulfill the remainder of the term for a position formerly held by Robert Wallace, who stepped down from the board at the end of 2022. Ms. Siddiki is an active member of the Bellevue community, who will bring an important community perspective to the board, and is eager to support the ongoing success of the BCCA. So tonight, again, I am requesting council concurrence with my appointment. With that, I turn it over to you, Deputy Mayor.
Okay, well, thank you. I think a simple head nod will do, unless there's any question?
Do we need to make a motion to concur?
Technically, a head nod, I think, will do, but do we need to do a, would you prefer a motion, Mr. Miyaki?
Motion would be fine.
Okay, then, Jennifer?
I move to confirm or to concur with the city manager's appointment of Ms. Siddiki to the Convention Center Authority Board.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes, and congratulations. All right, so next on our agenda, we have, I believe, two study session, well, sorry, I've got a consent calendar first, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'm moved.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes as well. Terrific. All right, now we can move to our two study session items.
Can we comment on something we just passed?
On the?
Yeah. I just wanted to, we had a couple of comments, and people commenting on the purchase of the 16.4 acres to expand the trails and open space and, and, you know, wildlife areas in Newport Hills. That was a heck of a deal, 16.4 acres for $1.025 million, and it's a really good use of the open space funding. We got a lot of bang for our buck, and I wanted to say thank you to the neighborhood and to the staff for jumping on this and bringing it to us. Thanks.
Anyone else want to make a comment on that?
Second.
Janice, would you like to, sorry, council members on?
Yeah, I, I too want to pile on to that, because the part that I heard clearly was, this was part of the community, seeing that although, you know, we might have been watching that property, being, being really vigilant about seeing that they were ready to sell so that we also had the opportunity to do that. And I want to just say it's actually a testament to the continual staff, because when I first got on council, we heard about the Maidenbauer, and it was decades of outreach to those homeowners to finally get enough parcels to build the park. And so when we have those opportunities, we very much want to take advantage of that from our funds that are available. But I do have to say that we don't have unlimited funds, and so the ability to very carefully look at what we can afford within our budget is an important part of that. So thank you.
Thank you, council members on. Any other comments on that? No? Oh, oh, yeah, absolutely. Please, Mayor, go ahead.
That is an outstanding piece of property. My husband and I have hiked the trail on that new park and looked over into this pristine forested valley and just thought, you know, I, I always wondered if it would ever be possible for the city to acquire this, not realizing they were actually working on it behind the scenes. And so this is such a great acquisition for the community. I'm really excited.
Agreed. Thank you for those comments. All right, so with that, we'll move on to our two study session items. Mr. Miyaki, would you like to set up the first one, I believe, on the King County Crisis Care Centers levy?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor and council members and Mayor. The first item, again, is on your agenda, is an informational update on the King County Behavioral Health Levy, which will be included in the county's upcoming April 25 special election ballot. Joining us at the table is Lacey Jane Wolf, Assistant Director of Intergovernmental Affairs, as well as Selena Stevens, Equity and Regional Policy Advisor, both from the city manager's office. And joining them is also from King County is Leo Flor, whom many of you know, Director of King County Department of Community and Human Services. And with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you, Lacey Jane.
Thank you all so much for allowing us this time to have Director Flor here tonight. You, as Brad Miyaki said, you all have heard from him before on other King County levies, but this is the first time you'll be hearing from him about this new behavioral health levy, also known as the Crisis Care Centers Levy. This is an informational briefing for you all to learn more about how this levy, if approved by voters, might impact human services on the east side. And so with that, I will turn it over to Director Leo Flor.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and council members. Again, my name is Leo Flor, and I have the privilege of directing King County's Department of Community and Human Services. As I proceed through tonight's briefing, happy to answer any questions that the council may have. I do note that my purpose here is informational. Because this is an active ballot measure, it's appropriate for me to either favor or disfavor the measure. I will describe the problem set that we encounter inside of our community generally, and then specifically the proposal itself. Two opening items. One, when we talk about behavioral health, this is encompassing of both mental health and substance use disorder. Those are previously separated regimes, but both of them come within this term behavioral health. The second is that people do recover. Behavioral health treatment works when people have access to it in the right amounts, in the right settings, and it is a form of medical care, of healthcare. And so when we are proposing behavioral health solutions, it is under the, the, the theory and what we see when we are able to get it right for people, that it works. There are three problems that we see within our region right now, and so I'll just go over those quickly. One, and I make a comparison here to the physical health care system. If any of us were to break a bone right now, I imagine that they're not being super familiar with Bellevue's urgent care system. I imagine that there are several urgent care facilities that any of us could walk into right now in a one- or two-mile radius. It's notable right now that inside of King County, there's not a single walk-in behavioral health care, urgent care facility where any of us could walk into without an appointment or a referral. There is one facility in downtown Seattle. It's called the Crisis Solution Center. You must be referred by a law enforcement officer or brought by certain classes of mobile crisis teams. It has a total of 16 beds for this purpose, and that's the sole facility within the county that you would call a crisis facility for behavioral health on a voluntary basis. The second, and there's been a lot of reporting about this recently, but we have lost one-third of the behavioral health residential treatment beds in King County since 2018. There are a lot of reasons for that, and happy to go into them if they are of interest to the council, but just as a purely numerical exercise, we have fewer beds than we had in 2018. The number that we had in 2018 was 355 of these mental health residential beds for the 2.3 million-person county, and we now have 244. And the third problem that we're seeing is a real unsustainable workforce issue. I do note that this is present, I think, across many sectors of the economy, certainly the public sector, and then when we take a look at human services and behavioral health as a component of the human services sector, we do have a consistent issue with the wages that workforces, our workforce is making, and then it's really translating into a high rates of turnover, low ability to do this work for a career. And we do believe that if we continue to have really high rates of turnover, and people are not able to do this career long enough to attain mastery, that that does translate into the quality of the human services that we see and expect as government funders. Another framework that we see, and this is really a national framework, any functional crisis system has three core components. So the first is someone to talk to. The second is someone to respond. And then third, which is the focus of this presentation, is someplace to go or someplace to be brought. So if we were talking about the 911 system, you can call 911. A law enforcement officer, perhaps a first responder, like a firefighter, will respond, and if necessary, they can take you to an emergency room for medical care or to the jail. That's the appropriate response. When we take a look at the behavioral health care system that we are building nationally and locally, what we see is that we increasingly do have someplace to call. The 988 line is a good example of that, which is identified specifically for people who might be experiencing behavioral health crises generally or suicidal ideation specifically. And again, increasingly, we have people who will respond. So co-responder models, where behavioral health professionals can join a law enforcement officer or mobile crisis teams, outreach teams and peers. The thing that I mentioned before is what we lack in our region right now is a place to go, so that third element of the crisis response system. Shifting out of the problem description into a description of the ballot measure ordinance that will come before King County voters on April 25th, the proposed Crisis Care Centers Levy contains three components, each of which is designed to address the three problems that I've just described. First, it would fund the creation and operations of five crisis care centers. More on what constitutes a crisis care center in a moment. Second, it would preserve the existing stock of 11 mental health residential facilities that we still have in the region, and then seek to build back 111 beds that we have lost. And a little bit more about what mental health residential is specifically, but one way to distinguish these two, number one, a crisis care center is a short-term facility. It's designed for the moment of crisis and up to 14 days after. And then a mental health residential facility is a long-term facility. It's a place to live while in recovery, while seeking services, and to regain basic life skills. And then the third component of the levy, and these, we'll go through how they look in the ordinance, is designed to make more sustainable and representative the behavioral health care workforce, under the understanding that an empty building doesn't really do any good. We need to be able to fill buildings with people who can actually provide the care within them. So now, if you're keeping score with the ordinance, what you'll start to see is citations. So if you see the section indicators, those are citations to the ordinance, but I'll relieve most people from, from getting too into that as we go. The proposal does divide the county into four, what we call crisis response zones. Those are depicted on the map up above, and the city of Bellevue resides within the east of the crisis response zones. The ordinance would require the creation of five crisis care centers, one in each of the crisis response zones, and then a fifth specifically for youth, where youth are defined as persons who are aged under 19, and that could be in any of the crisis response zones for the total of five. The levy sets out purposes. The paramount purpose of the levy is the creation and the operation of the five crisis care centers. The levy creates five mandatory, or excuse me, four mandatory components of a crisis care center. I've summarized them here. So again, these are the short-term facilities. The first thing is that it must be able to receive 24-hour walk-in drop-off for anybody who would come to the care center, whether they're dropped off by law enforcement officers, first responders, mobile crisis teams, family members, or people coming in themselves. The second is that there would be a 23-hour observation facility. This is a type of facility that exists in other state. Our state is currently considering finalizing licensure requirements for facilities like this right now in the current legislative session. The idea there is that, under the right circumstances, within 23 hours, many people in active crisis, especially if they're attended by peers and in a calm situation, are able to actually de-escalate from that state of crisis in a way that the provider can then set up longer-term care plans. The third mandatory component is the creation of a crisis stabilization unit. That's that 14-day component, so some folks would be able to stay for up to 14 days. This is a type of facility that's already created and recognized under state law. The average stay in facilities like this actually looks a little bit closer to just under nine days, but it's possible to stay at them for up to 14 days. And then the fourth necessary component is the presence of designated crisis responders. So everything I've described to this point is a voluntary behavioral health intervention or facility. Designated crisis responders, who are also super, are, are under my supervision in the Department of Community and Human Services, are the front gate to the involuntary treatment system in the state of Washington, and these are the folks whose job it is to come out and make an assessment about whether a person constitutes a grave harm to themselves or others such that they should be involuntarily detained. Some other components, I won't go through them in as much detail, but happy to answer any questions that members of the council may have. Two quick questions on crisis care centers. One is who would operate them? The presumption here is that the operators would be providers, so not King County employees themselves, with the exception of the designated crisis responders who would be on site. The second question that we do get with some frequency is how would the sighting work? So with the important caveat that is noted at the bottom of the slide, that the ballot measure ordinance itself is silent on this, and an implementation plan, which the council must approve, the King County Council must approve, and would also be subject to mandatory dual referral to the Regional Policy Committee, on which a Bellevue City Council member sits. With that, going through that process, what we are proposing and what we have been envisioning is that the county would not cite the facilities, that facilities would be proposed by partnerships between host jurisdiction cities and providers, and that the city or the county would then sit in review of that, those in a request for proposal, and then be able to make an award. This looks a little bit like how the affordable housing system works across the county and the state. So that, that's the paramount purpose, create and operate the five short-term crisis care centers. The second is the longer-term mental health residential beds. Again, this is in some ways just for emphasis. We've lost a third of these beds. The levy would seek to build back the beds that we have lost. One note, why 16 beds? So we'd have to build them back in 16-bed increments. This is something called the Institutes for Men, the IMD rule. It's a, comes from the federal- It's a, comes from the federal government, from Medicaid. And what we're really looking at is, in the 60s, there were large asylums. We had the Community Mental Health Act in the 60s that then got rid of those large asylums. As a matter of policy, the federal government began to incentivize the creation of small community-based facilities, and 16 beds is the increment that they've really landed on. And so in order for a facility to be eligible for Medicaid reimbursement for certain types of residential care, it may not have more than 16 beds within it. What is mental health residential? It's, you know, behavioral health is full of government words, and so there are a lot of sort of concepts that are very specific, but sometimes it's easier to describe them more plainly. So this is a place to live while in recovery, not in the moment of crisis, and it combines both the access to behavioral healthcare with a lot of the daily living skills and reintroduction into the community is the focus. These do, again, tend to be community-based facilities. And then the last supporting purpose is workforce. Again, empty buildings don't heal people all by themselves, so we do need people to work within them. We do have a behavioral health workforce shortage within the behavioral health system, and so the levy would contain the requirement to both make more representative and more sustainable the behavioral health workforce. And what we're talking about is really two things. One is specific to the crisis care centers. The levy does have the obligation, and is modeled in such a way that it could fund the staffing at all of the crisis care centers, and to do so at a level that would allow them to be, the people working within it, to be paid a wage that is, on average, 20% higher than a comparable facility is paid today. That's specific to the crisis care centers. The second component of this would be to make workforce-wide investments in order to bring more people into the field and make it sustainable. So here, we're talking about things like apprenticeship programs, programs that would fund or reimburse the cost of certification for behavioral health licensure, or perhaps do things like drive down costs for behavioral health providers, insurance, personal insurance, childcare costs for providers. Costs. So this is a proposed property tax levy. Specifically, it is a nine-year, single-year levy, LID-LIFT. It would be assessed at 14 and a half cents per $1,000 in its first year. It would have a 1% annual limit factor, which is required, the only option that you have when you go with a nine-year levy, LID-LIFT. I've depicted here costs, and I'm going to do this in two methodologies, just to show a full picture. So this is our, what we would call our 2022 estimate. This is the estimate that we used when we originally introduced the levy, and as the council considered it. And we've depicted Bellevue's estimated annual payment. What I do emphasize here is that these are estimates based on medians that we get from the county assessor. A particular home's value would be very much different than this, either higher or lower. And the second is that assessed values often do differ from a home's sales value. I mentioned that there are two methodologies. Since having introduced the levy, we do have new information in form of updated 2023 assessed values, median assessed values, from the King County Assessor. So this really takes that same methodology, but now estimates with an updated assessed value from 2023. So in, using the 2023 estimate, we estimate that the median valued Bellevue home would pay just under $220, or 219.53. And then again, to revert to the other one, under the 2022 methodology, that same equation leads to an estimated median value payment of $193.71. Timeline. We are on track right now for an April 25th ballot. It's a election at which a simple majority is required to pass the ballot measure ordinance, and should it pass, collections would begin in 2024, with an implementation planning process required to be done by the end of this year. That would come before the Regional Policy Committee and the King County Council.
Great. Well, thank you so much for that great presentation, Ms. Flohr. Thank you for coming down and walking us through this, and explaining how this levy would impact behavioral, behavioral health services on the east side. If my colleagues will indulge me, I'm the head of the, or liaison to the Human Services Commission, so I'll ask you a couple of questions first, but I know my colleagues will have plenty of questions as well. I think it was on slide number four, you noted the role of co-responders. If I got the, I didn't see any slide numbers on there, so I didn't want to make sure it was number four, but. So with the co-responders and the behavioral health, healthcare system, Bellevue and other cities like us are investing in a co-responder model, and I know other cities are interested, and they're looking at it, but can you tell us more about how the levy might benefit the first responder operations, including co-responders, law enforcement, and fire rescue? And would these crisis care centers allow them to operate more efficiently? And I think you mentioned that upfront. Right, right now, only law enforcement can, can bring someone off and drop them up at one of these, these centers, so I'm kind of curious about that. And then second of all, I'll give you my second question right up front here, too, is I would be curious, what happened to the 100-plus beds? That might be a longer story, but if you could give us the Cliff Notes on that, that would be great.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
You bet.
To the first, so we set up the framework of having someone to call, somebody to respond, and a place to go. And one way to talk about what we see in the current crisis response system is co-responders, and it's fantastic model. I think it's a really important part of our community's arsenal to really meet people where they are and provide the best type of intervention. What we see right now is, if the nature of the incident is not one that they can resolve on the scene, or if the nature of the person's conduct or situation is not such that they should be arrested, there's no place to take them. And so we do get a lot of feedback from first responders, and this is something that I convened a work group over seven meetings at the beginning, for the first half of last year around, is there's just no place to take people if you're not going to take them to the emergency room or to the jail. Or to leave them where they are. And so this is an emerging best practice that we're seeing across the nation. One way that we know that this is helpful to law enforcement officers and to first responders, we can take a look at a similar network of facilities that exists in Maricopa County, where they have three centers that look a lot like the crisis care centers we're proposing. In 2021, those three facilities as a network received 28,000 law enforcement drop-offs over the course of that one year, although there may be some duplicated individuals within that 28,000 number. So we do believe that the volume of need is certainly out there, and for people who would be better served by a behavioral health intervention or a medical intervention, as opposed to a jail-based intervention, or, you know, sitting in an emergency room, we do think that this creates a real option. The second is that the state has and is continuing to create regimes that allow law enforcement officers specifically to transport people to a facility like this, if it exists, even if there is not a crime suspected at that point, so long as that the officer believes that the person poses a risk to themselves, and there is both authority under the involuntary treatment statute, but also under the use of force statutes that are specific for law enforcement officers. Both of those allow a peace officer, in the statutory terms, to transport somebody to a facility like this, if one exists. So that's, you know, the creation of a place to go, I think, is the chief benefit. The thing that we have heard, although I don't have the data to support this in any empirical way, is also that a lot of police officers in particular want to get to the next call. They want to get to the call that is more fit for the type of intervention that they can provide. And so, more anecdotally than database, we have heard from law enforcement officers that they would love to be able to drop somebody off at a facility. The Arizona ones have a performance measure around them, where they need to be able to complete the drop-off in eight minutes. And that's as compared to what is often described as a three- or four-hour process, when a law enforcement officer drops a person off, either to be booked into jail or to be enrolled at an emergency room.
Indeed.
To your second question, Mr. Deputy Mayor, the Cliff Notes version of what happened to the facilities, it is a story of having invested heavily in the capital construction of facilities at the state level in the 80s and 90s, and then having not invested at all in the maintenance of those facilities. So it is not a mistake, actually, that all these facilities are approaching the end of their useful life without having received substantial maintenance in the intervening decades at about the same time. And I do expect that we would continue to lose facilities. In fact, I received a letter two weeks ago, and about another facility that's considering closing inside of the county right now, absent some sort of capital investment infusion. So anyone who does capital planning, and I know that comes to for the council quite frequently, knows that those are 30-year investment timelines, and we have gone past 30 years on a lot of these investments, and the maintenance has not been funded since then.
Great. Thank you so much for answering my questions, and I know my colleagues are eager to ask some of theirs, so I'll move along here. I'll start with Councilmember Stokes, who represents Bellevue on the Regional Policy Committee. I understand he and his fellow committee members worked on the levy ordinance for a few months, so then we'll just go down the line, and then I'll end with the, with the mayor. Yes, Councilmember Stokes?
Okay, thank you, Deputy Mayor. On the Regional Policy Committee, just for information, includes King County, Council members, and Sound Cities Association appoints five people, and I'm one of those, and the city of Seattle. So it's a wide group, and it's from all parts of the state, and the county. And we, you know, had a lot of work on this. We have, we're limited, just for the public, that we can't, there are things we can't ask or get into detail on this, because it's, we're in an election process with that now, so it's more just informational in a sense, so. But it'd be fun to actually discuss a lot of this more. And we, one of the things that was really important about it for us particularly, is that with our CCAP program, and going into working with the first responders, with the police department, and the fire department, working together, and where you, like you said, where do you take them? So we worked on that. It's been really exciting, and my point on the whole thing is that, in a sense, and who has been involved in this, is that this is a regional county process, and it's been, really been very positive, and thanks to a lot of good leadership from King County. And I think that's, we're looking forward to how that works. And as an aside, you understand, you've read this in the paper, that Kirkland and several other cities, including Bothell, some others, are themselves doing something like this. And in a sense, this may be a catalyst for a lot more development on the whole piece, which is good. And again, it's really something we're proud to be part of, and really appreciate the work and the collaboration between your department, the county, and Bellevue.
Thank you, Councilmember Stokes. Councilmember Stokes?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for coming and providing information. I know Councilmember Lee and I were just at the National League of Cities in DC, and these types of services certainly have been talked about around the country. I did, I'm going to make my comments and ask my questions, and then you can respond. So one of your slides, you talked about behavioral health as a form of medical care. So what I was curious about is, does that mean that in addition to this levy funding, that there is state and federal funding available? You said something about Medicaid, and so I wanted to better understand how this funding might be matching, or if there is other funding that would be available that would support that. And I think that the deputy mayor asked about the CCAT team, so I think what I heard you say is that, that we would be able to bring folks experiencing behavioral health to these kinds of facilities with the no wrong door. But if I look at the east side, it's a really long rectangle, so I'm trying to get a sense for, you know, where is that capacity going to be added, and how far away is it, and how many beds would actually be available for the community that is in crisis? You had a slide, I believe it was slide 13, that talks about the $220 a year for the average home price. But then in the bottom right, it looked like, I wasn't quite sure I understood fully, that is that going to be the amount that we're going to see? Is, is that collection, or is it the mileage rate that is going to be going up and down? What am I trying to say? I'm trying to understand whether we are collecting a certain amount of money, so as the home prices go up, the actual rate actually goes down, because you're collecting the same? I don't know exactly what the right term is for that, but I just wanted to make sure we understood what that is. And then lastly, when you talk about behavioral health pipeline and growing the apprenticeship programs, would, would a place like Bellevue College be eligible for that type of apprenticeship programming? So I wanted to understand a bit more about that as part of the levy. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. So to the first question about what is the possibility or likelihood of federal or state matching or contribution funds? The, it can get very complicated, but at the highest level, the levy, King County has proposed the levy in many ways, because the level of likely state investment has not kept up with the level of need that we see within the community. And so I described how that looks with the loss of facilities, and described how that looks with the absence of this entire class of facility within the county. That said, there is substantial Medicaid funding that does continue to flow from the federal to the state, and then to the county government for the provision of behavioral health services. The vast majority of that Medicaid funding is for what you could sort of roughly call primary care, as opposed to crisis care. And then there's a separate set of state funds called the non-M Medicaid, creatively, the non-M Medicaid rate that will come for a lot of the crisis funds, or, excuse me, the crisis services. But none of that gets to construction, and so the capital construction of a facility would require usually a special or particular appropriation at the state level. For example, the county was in receipt of $16 million of state-directed appropriations in the last state budget. That went to, that contributed to the construction or the maintenance of two facilities. And then what we have proposed in this levy is between five crisis care centers and up to seven mental health residential facilities, 12, 12 facilities overall. So the scales are different, is one way to propose that. The county has structured the proposal to absorb as much federal and state money as it's possible to receive. So I mentioned a sort of hierarchical set of purposes of the levy, a paramount purpose, supporting purpose, supporting purpose. And what that allows the levy structure to do is to say, if the state were to allocate $200 million for the construction of crisis facilities after, should voters approve this levy after it was approved, then the structure of the levy would actually allow King County to absorb that $200 million of capital, and then roll the remaining amount into the secondary purpose or the third purpose, so to create more mental health residential beds, or to make more workforce investments. I'm unaware of any year in which the state has appropriated $200 million specific to King County for the creation of facilities, and that's why I mentioned scale. So I can't predict, and wouldn't venture to predict, what the state might do, but based on historical levels of investment, we have structured the levy so that it could absorb as much as we could get, but also grapple with the fact that the need is growing, not shrinking, or staying the same. On your second question, could the CCAT team bring people to a crisis care center as we have proposed it? Yes. They're designed to, for exactly that type of purpose, and any, any person in any jurisdiction could transport people to them. On the question of where they would be cited, you're correct, that what we've rendered the east King County crisis response zones does extend quite a bit to the east. I'm mindful that the majority of the population that is, that lives within that crisis response zone is on the western half of that. That said, we have not selected any of the sites, and would need to receive proposals should voters approve the levy for where host jurisdiction would want to situate and cite that, or any of the facilities. And so it's unclear to me whether there would be 12 proposals, or one sort of consolidated original proposal about where a facility should be. To your question about the methodology, it is a levy that is set with an initial first year rate, and so it is not set to collect a specific amount, but rather, it's, it's, a rate is set. And then what has been the case recently in King County is that assessed values have exceeded the capped rate at which property tax can grow. So if that were to continue to be the case, the levy would grow by 1% annual, plus the value of new construction, which really gets into assessments in a detailed way, which I'm happy to, if you'd like. Should property values fall, then the levy's revenue would fall. So the, it's not set up to generate a specific amount, but that said, we do watch forecasts that forecast out at least seven years, and have modeled the levy in order to deliver its requirements based on the forecasts that we have available to us. The last question, could Bellevue College be a site for a apprenticeship program? I think the proper way to answer the question from the ballot measure ordinance is, there's nothing within the ballot measure ordinance that would preclude the inclusion of Bellevue College in any apprenticeship program that the levy may fund. I think, once we got into implementation planning, we want to see and understand where both the apprenticeship program understand where both the apprenticeship programs are, and then where the certification training is that is creating the opportunity for people to become behavioral health professionals. I am aware that Bellevue College does have some of those courses, but couldn't commit specifically to any particular institution or location for sure being part of that program.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmembers Zahn, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. A very succinct presentation. Thank you. I have a few questions, follow up with some of the questions that were asked, then I have finally a specific question. Following up with some of the questions that are being asked is that you mentioned about potential federal, well, Councilmember Zahn mentioned, potential federal government participation. We know that, you know, this bipartisan infrastructure law has provided lots of money, and that includes a lot of things, including affordable housing and various human services needs and a lot of stuff. So I would say that, you know, that probably should be open for, King County, for you to take a look at and see there's some potential, you know, to look at the financial picture. So that's, that's the first question, kind of question. I don't know whether, you know, you have some response to that or not.
Briefly, Councilmember, I appreciate the question very much. We are watchful for what may come from the federal government in terms of funding that could fund the types of services or facilities that this levy is proposed to address. I'm unaware of a specific proposal stemming particularly from the federal government on this right now. But one thing that has historically been the case when seeking federal grants is the ability to demonstrate local contribution. It's sort of the reverse of the match question, is it's often the case that the federal government responds favorably to local jurisdictions who are able to demonstrate that they can provide, that the federal government would provide the last piece. And then we're able to go forward, and the structure of the levy is such that we build to displace any local funds with federal or state funds, and then roll them through to build more behavioral health beds, or to make more workforce investments.
Sure. I didn't mean to tell you how to do it. I'm just making a suggestion that this might be something to consider, you know, when it becomes, you know, ultimately it has impact on your projected, you know, revenue. So another question that has, I have in mind is, based on the questions that have been asked and your response, this is not a simple, straightforward issue. It has a lot of interrelationship connection to a lot of the issues, like mental health, like drug abuse and all that stuff. You know, it's similar very much to what we are looking at in terms of addressing homeless, affordable housing, right? It's really combined. There's so many different services that are provided by different jurisdictions. And so I would imagine it's not gonna be easy. And, but I would hope that there's some clear connection that would be shown, that, you know, how does one affect the other. You say there are services that are not available, services that have been lost. One of the specific, you mentioned, we've been losing beds. And you mentioned, you know, I think by answering, Deputy Mayor, is because they are, they're not maintained, and there's no continuing service to it. So there may be other things that relate to it. Again, it's just, what can we do? What can we look at? What can we address? What can we consider? I think that would be something that, you know, I'd be very interested to know, because it is an overall interconnected challenge problem. So, so beside that, okay, do you have something to say about that? Just curious.
Just real quickly, in terms of the connections, one example, and I know that this is one that is an important issue to the city of Bellevue right now. So as the city begins to construct new affordable or supportive housing, one of the questions that always comes up is what services will be available within supportive housing to ensure the residents within the building can be successful, and that the building is successful within its community. One of the pieces of feedback that we get quite a bit from supportive housing providers is that when they have a person who enters behavioral health crisis, they don't have enough tools or places to send a person. They're able to do a lot to manage a person and to prevent crisis, but in those instances, either in supportive housing, but frankly, in any housing, or outside. When a person needs that crisis care, right now, if you were to call from any of your homes for a designated crisis responder to come to your home to do an evaluation, on average, it would take more than 270 hours for that response. That's an unacceptably long time for a crisis response system. So much can happen in that amount of time. And our supportive housing providers in particular still feel that. Were we not, as a set of governments, at some point to address the fact that we need additional behavioral health crisis capacity, and crisis capacity specifically, I do believe we would find ourselves essentially recreating crisis care centers in every affordable housing and supportive housing project that we begin to pursue, because we recognize that the people need the care, and we recognize that the care is not there right now. And so without taking a position on this particular proposal, what animates is this idea that some services are better and more efficiently provided in a centralized way, and then distributed regionally, and that's what animates this proposal.
Yeah. An example of the interrelationship connections with even public safety, right? Law enforcement offices, what do they do? How do they do? How much they have to do if they come to a situation? So I think there's a lot of things connected. So ultimately, I hope we can, you know, have them sort of thought through. Finally, the question I would ask is, the city of Kirkland is partnering with other cities to build a new crisis response center dedicated to serving community members across north and northeast King County. Can you tell us how that crisis center would interact with the King County levy funded crisis care centers?
Absolutely. So there is nothing mandatory within the ballot measure ordinance about any relationship with the Kirkland and Five City proposal, and should voters approve this one, crisis care centers. The crisis care center levy is crafted in such a way that it would be possible for a, the Kirkland-sited facility to become the North Crisis Response Zones Crisis Care Center if that set of cities applied for that to be the case. It does allow for pre-existing facilities to enter into the crisis care center's network if those facilities operate in a way that's consistent with what the ballot measure ordinance requires. So there's nothing required about it. We are in close conversation with all of those cities, and they're aware that should the levy pass, they would have an opportunity to apply for that to become the crisis response center, or, excuse me, the crisis care center for the north. But I don't know whether they would or will do that.
Yeah. Or they should be considered as part of the levy, you know, requirements. That'd be good.
And another way to answer it is whether or not that crisis care center is funded by the crisis care center's levy, should voters approve it. They are, that facility in any case is still gonna be contracting back with the Department of Community Human Services and our Behavioral Health and Recovery Division. So we'll be the contract monitors for the operations of that facility no matter what.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Councilmember Robertson?
Thanks. So I have two subject areas I'd like to dig into with you tonight. Thank you for coming, Mr. Flor, and for the presentation. First, I'd like to talk about just general behavioral health funding in King County. I think we all value behavioral health, and I appreciate King County really looking at this with a, with a close eye. But it seems to me that there is a lot of programs that already exist. We have the Behavioral Health and Recovery, which has, you know, mental health, substance abuse disorder, crisis responders, crisis services, detox, emergency line, et cetera. That's, in 2021 numbers, that was 52 million a year in King County. There's the MID, which is a sales tax, which has the crisis diversions, recovery, and reentry, 77 million a year in 2021. And then there's other ones that have some overlap, but maybe not are directly overlapped. Best Starts for Kids has some behavioral health. That's 74 million a year. The Health Through Housing, 96 million a year. And the Homeless Housing Program, which I couldn't, there was not information on the King County dashboard to say how much that is. And then the Veterans Senior and Human Services Levy, which has a behavioral health component at 39 million a year. So not counting the county homeless housing program, because we couldn't find numbers for that. That's almost $340 million a year in 2021 numbers. And then if my math is right, 1.25 billion over nine years, this new levy would add about another 140 million per year to the revenue source, which makes, you know, almost a half a billion dollars a year coming in, in, in revenue to King County for homelessness, housing, and behavioral health. So with, with the 340 million a year, why is there not enough money? Why do you need more money, number one? And number two, how will this, how will this, how will King County assure that you are not, because it seems like some of these are duplicating efforts? How will you make sure you're not just duplicating efforts? More, more administrative people doing the same thing as the people being funded by other sources? So that's my first question. My second question's gonna be about Harborview. But can you answer that one first, please?
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember. So of the five programs that you mentioned, and then named associated budgets with them, the first two, you are correct that those are fully attributable to behavioral health expenditures. The last three, you cited the full levy amounts, only a small portion of which is associated with behavioral health expenditures. So the first two, the majority of behavioral health funding that comes through King County, and the total annual amount in 2023, it will estimate to be about $365 million. That's Medicaid funding, the vast majority of it. And the way the Medicaid funding works is that it is passed through the county to providers to reimburse them for the costs of services that they've provided. So it's not new programming. It's, that's the sort of federal government's way to pay for healthcare for people who cannot afford their own healthcare insurance. The second one that you mentioned, where I do believe that the full, the totality of it is attributable to behavioral healthcare is the MID. I actually have it at $95 million in 2023, although the MID's collections as a sales tax have, have moved pretty quickly over the last three years in particular. So it is a highly variable source. What the MID is primarily investing in, in addition to some mandatory investments in court-based programming, is again, the full range of services, but not in facilities. And so the MID does not contain, and I do note that the mayor is actually a member of the MID Advisory Committee, and so would welcome the mayor's correction at any point. But the MID is not really focused on the creation of facilities, or substantially on the, the sort of maintenance of workforce. And this begins to identify the differentiation that I think is really important. Within the three other programs that you mentioned, so Health Through Housing, the Veterans Seniors and Human Services Levy, and the Best Starts for Kids program, there are specific investments in programs, and they tend to be very far upstream, to use that metaphor, at the sort of screening stage. So Best Starts for Kids, for example, its largest behavioral health investment is in a screening program that's based within schools called ESPERT. And that really works with schools to identify indicators of potential emerging behavioral health issues or suicidal ideation for kids who are going to school. The Veterans Seniors and Human Services Levy, I think, has the most sort of variety of behavioral health investments. But again, they tend to be in screening. So there's a PEARLs program, which screens seniors for behavioral health conditions. There is a funding of veterans' behavioral health for veterans who are ineligible to receive VA care. And then there is funding for an Emergency Services Patrol, which is one of those, not who do you call, or where do you go, but who responds programs. That's limited to downtown Seattle. So there are small investments there. But what, if you render it all, what is missing is facilities, crisis facilities specifically, and workforce. And the three components of this levy proposal are crisis facilities and their, and their operations and workforce, which don't exist right now, behavioral health beds, which we are losing under the current funding regime, and then workforce, which is already insufficiently funding, funded such that there's not enough people to perform the services. And so we have crafted it to avoid duplication and to come, to fit with essentially the holes in the existing behavioral health system.
Okay. Thank you. That's very helpful. So about Harborview, last month, the county council received an update on the 1.7 billion Harborview capital bond measure. I understand that since that time, the cost projections have increased almost a billion, 900 million, to an estimated 2.6 billion. Since Harborview is often known as like the spot where a lot of the people in crisis end up going, I'm wondering whether the county is considering, assuming this levy passes, whether the county is considering using some of the potential levy revenue to complete the larger funding package for Harborview. I think that our whole region relies on Harborview. So what is the county thinking about that?
Thank you, Councilmember. I wouldn't presume to represent that the county, I think the county is inactive, the decision-making between both branches about how to address the funding issues that you've identified. I do sort of resort back to what is an eligible expenditure, and then what the levy must do, and that sort of creates a regime that makes it really hard to do anything with the levy other than what it is explicitly designed for. And that's, that is intentional. So again, you, you must fund the paramount purpose. You must fund supporting purposes, one or two. There is a definition of eligible expenditures within the levy that prescribes, these are the things, these are the only things that the levy may be spent on. And then there's an additional paragraph that specifies a number of things that you can't spend the levy on. And then it says, you can only spend the levy within its eligible expenditures, excluding what you can't spend it on, after the passage of an implementation plan, should voters approve the levy. And so there's a number of steps there that, that really sort of, sort of to constrict or focus with the levy may be spent on. And what I can't answer for you conclusively is if there is a way to make, you know, expenditure at Harborview an eligible expenditure of the levy. But any way that it would go, it would have to be a policy decision undertaken by both the Regional Policy Committee and the King County Council.
All right. Thank you. I would just say that the way you described the funding, I think that a lawyer with a very wicked sense of humor developed that.
Thank you, Councilmember Robertson. Councilmember Barksdale?
All right. Thank you. Good to see you, Leo. Thanks for being here. Just a, one clarifying question. So five crisis centers, crisis care centers, can you talk a little bit about how five was determined, and sort of how that fits into the broader need across the county? And maybe tying it, I know there was a question about the state, but also how that might relate to fit within the total need relative to like HB 5120, if that word passes as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. So why five? In some ways, we've taken a look at, one of the ideas was to make sure that we have geographic dispersion. A crisis response system is actually a little bit different than sometimes the way human services folks analyze need and capacity. So we often say, how much need is there, and how many beds should there be to meet that need? What we can learn from a crisis response system or a first responder system is the question's actually, how fast can you respond or be available? And so one of the ideas is that we have to have something positioned in these four crisis response zones such that they are geographically accessible by anybody who needs to, to use them. So on some level, four zones versus five zones versus six zones is, you know, a function of seeing how much each of these facilities is likely to cost, and understanding what their capacity is. So comparable facilities, the one at north that will be cited in Kirkland, for example, that provider believes that they can handle about 14,000 people per year. The, I shared the statistic earlier that law enforcement drop-offs have, have tended to be about 9,000 per facility per year in a similar network in Maricopa County, Arizona. And so by balancing the total number of what we project the need is for crisis care, understanding that we would not, in any version of a proposal, be able to propose enough money to fund 10 of these, and recognizing that there's sort of a natural pattern, I guess, of subregions that we have adopted in other parts of human services. That's how we really arrived at four for adults. And then the fifth for youth, and some folks have asked, what's the basis for just one out of five being a portion for youth? When we take a look at overall county population, the number or percentage of county population of people who are youth is about 20%. And then we take a look at the data around crisis calls, and we would expect this, but 4% of involuntary treatment calls, for example, are for youth. And so we, based on those two stats, we really do believe that one center right now is appropriate. To your larger question, though, Councilmember, and this also gets to Councilmember Robertson's question, I do not believe that this levy is sufficient to satisfy the full amount of behavioral health care and need that we have in our county. And I actually don't think it's close. I think we are seeing a number of indicators that behavioral health care, both across the nation and within King County, and in any city, the needs are growing dramatically. We Uh, we operate and contract with the, uh, two-on-one line, for example, who also operates the nine-eight-eight line. They are seeing, uh, increases in the calls that they're receiving, going up a hundred percent a year, two hundred percent a year. When the nine-eight-eight line called, or the, when the nine-eight-eight line opened, uh, within a couple of months, if you include text messages nationally, the number of, of contacts to that system went up over a thousand percent. Uh, we have a youth, uh, uh, mental health crisis that's well documented. Uh, as, uh, Councilmember Lee mentioned, we see mental health playing out in the housing and homelessness systems. Uh, we also have seen mental health and behavioral health more broadly playing out within the, uh, legal system, both in the criminal, uh, in the backlog of cases, the number of people waiting, awaiting restoration within the King County jail, uh, and then the conversation about how often the jail might be being used right now as a sort of behavioral health facility of first resort and the largest inside of the county right now. So, uh, those are just data points. I can't comprehensively, uh, unfortunately, say to you, Councilmember, or anybody on the council, we have this much behavioral health need and we therefore need this much capacity to address it. Uh, what I can see, uh, very clearly from my vantage point is we're nowhere near meeting the need right now.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Barksdale. Mayor Robinson.
Thank you. Thanks for remembering me. Uh, I wanted to say, Leo, that, you know, just kind of anecdotally, as a healthcare professional, and then in my role on mid and in my work with human services, I think your description of the need is extremely accurate. And, uh, I, Councilmembers on, I appreciate your recommendation of partnering with Bellevue College to create a workforce pipeline for these jobs. And Councilmember Robertson, I'll just say, mid is, gosh, it is so, uh, is so stretched as it is, and, uh, it really cannot fulfill the needs that this program is describing. So Leo, my question to you, I'm going to describe, uh, a, a, a real situation that I witnessed where, um, somebody in a mental health crisis, uh, ends up going to Overlake Hospital with their parents, even though they're an adult, and is in a complete crisis and agrees finally to intervention and having treatment. And the hospital turns around and says, I'm sorry, you're, you're too severe of a case for us to manage, and send that person back home. And I wonder how that experience might have been different if there was a crisis care facility available.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, one, just to sort of empirically support the example that you're giving, uh, hundreds of people wait for two days or more inside of emergency rooms right now awaiting a behavior, an appropriate behavioral health placement in our local hospitals. And that's just, so the, the, the situation that you're describing happens frequently. Um, the, uh, short answer is, uh, unless the person had a, uh, physical healthcare condition that was life-threatening at the moment, such that they should first have that addressed, which presumably they would at a, at a emergency room, uh, the person should go to the crisis care center. Um, they are designed to accept people in, in, in all sort, on all states. If a person's, uh, conduct or behavior is such that involuntary treatment is actually the more appropriate course at that point, uh, then that assessment can be done on site. Um, but they're designed to take folks in, um, and then clinically provide the type of care necessary to de-escalate a person in exactly the type of behavioral health crisis that you mentioned, Madam Mayor. And then a last, uh, a data point, uh, some folks will say, well, why wouldn't we just try to automatically involuntarily detain the person? Um, so right now in the involuntary detention system, uh, this is a pretty consistent statistic. Uh, twenty-six percent of people who are assessed as needing involuntary detention will actually be turned away by an ENT, which is a evaluation and treatment center, the particular class of facility to which we send people as their first stop when they've been involuntarily detained. Um, and the reason that they're turning them away is typically for medical acuity. So at the medical facility, you get turned away for behavioral health acuity. At the behavioral health facility, you get turned away for medical acuity. And the purpose of a crisis care center is actually to be able to address both of those and accept the person.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for that explanation.
Thank you, Mayor Robinson. All right, uh, Mr. Flor, thank you again for coming down with a great presentation and, uh, going over the levy, uh, with us. Thank you so much, Lacey Jean-Wolfe and Alaina Stevens for being here tonight as well. Really appreciate it. With that, we'll take about a, I don't know, a fifteen-minute break here. Uh, let's say ten after, uh, ten after eight, we'll come back. Thank you. We have our next study session item. Mr. Miyake, would you like to set it up, please?
Yes, thank you. Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Councilmembers, the next item on your agenda is an update on the recommendation on the Bellevue, uh, Bellevue Airfield Master Plan. Tonight's staff are seeking council feedback and support on a preferred master plan concept that will be submitted for environmental review. And just by way of background, at the October twenty-twenty-one, uh, council meeting, council-directed staff to prepare an update to the two thousand twelve Bellevue, Bellevue Airfield Park Master Plan with a goal of understanding community preferences and informing impacts associated with locating a new aquatic center on the site. And since then, there has been outreach to and engagement with the community by both the staff and the Parks and Community Services Board. Council received an update on these outreach efforts at its December fifth, twenty-twenty-two meeting. And with that background, joining us at the table are Michael Shiasaki, Director, as well as Pam Furman, Planning and Development Manager, both from the Parks and Community Services Department. And also joining us this evening are members of our Parks and Su- Parks and Community Services Board, Dave Hamilton Chair, as well as Paul Clark Vice Chair. Well, that'll go ahead and hand it over to you, Michael, to kick off the, the presentation.
Great. Thank you, City Manager, City Manager Miyake, and good evening, uh, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, and members of the City Council. So tonight, we are back in the next step of updating the master plan for Bellevue Airfield Park. And specifically tonight, we're requesting, uh, council feedback and support of a preferred master plan to take into environmental review. And we're not asking for, we are not asking for the council, uh, to make an action on a specific alternative this evening. So next slide, please. So, uh, we will briefly provide background, go back to the airfield park site, and then uh, look at the site context. Uh, we will, uh, go through the current adopted master plan for the park, and then I'll also look at the concept for the proposed aquatic center. Um, we'll talk about this planning effort in context of the Parks and Open Space System Plan Update. And as you may recall, that plan was updated just last year. We'll also then go into the community outreach and feedback completed, uh, as a part of the master plan update. And then we'll look at the master plan alternatives and the feedback received in this process. And then, uh, Park Board Chair Hamilton and Vice Chair Clark will, uh, present the Park Board recommendation. And then finally, we'll provide next steps. So with that, I will turn it over to Pam Furman.
Good evening. Uh, the twenty-seven acre park, airfield, is located a quarter mile east along a pedestrian path to Robins Wood Park, which is fifty acres and north of I ninety in the East Gate area as shown on the map. In two thousand two, recognizing the Bellevue Airfield Park as may represent the last opportunity to acquire a large flat area in Bellevue for park purposes, specifically to provide an active community park, council approved the purchase. The site consists of three parcels, the fourteen-and-a-half acre purchased from Boeing, a two-and-a-half acre utility stormwater site, detention pond specifically, and a ten-acre elementary school site. Also throughout this presentation referenced as the northwest parcel. Today, the Bellevue Airfield Park Site is undeveloped. The site is well-located to support active recreation, located just off I ninety, and surrounded by, to the north, in the yellow area residence and in the purple office development. There is great vehicle access from the south, I ninety, through the office park on a hundred and sixtieth, while the pedestrian trail access is provided from north and west residential neighborhoods on well-established trails. From a development perspect- perspective, the site is full of utility easements, abandoned and operational, such as a landfill gas migration system, groundwater monitoring wells, and a major King County metro sewer line. We look forward to updating and improving many of these nineteen eighty vintage landfill si- systems when, when the development occurs. On this next slide, you're looking at a slope analysis of the site. The darker orange areas represent steep slopes and limit park development, while the lighter orange shows the flatter areas, generally the former landfill area, and also known as a field or a meadow. The arrows indicate the, um, direction of slope in this case. From a de- a site development perspective, there are sixteen acres on the, well, first of all, the photos that you're seeing in front of you develop trails, the field area, generally the landfill area, and on the right-hand side, you're looking at the stormwater detention From a site development perspective, uh, there are about sixteen acres on the north side of the property with limited development due to steep slopes and established forests, and about eleven-and-a-half acres of developable park space that's relatively flat, an open meadow or open field, and adjacent to those commercial neighbors. In twenty, twenty-twelve, the council adopted the master plan for Bellevue Airfield Park after about a four-year outreach, outreach and SEPA process. What you're looking at is that adopted master plan. So if the master plan was not adopted, we would be likely moving forward with development of the plan you see before you, which includes two sport fields, uh, the trails pointing out the shared parking with our commercial neighbors that we currently have easements for in place, picnic areas, and also part of this master plan, uh, besides the two lit synthetic turf sport fields, was expansion of Robins Wood off-leash park, or off-leash In twenty-twenty-one, the City Council directed an update to the existing Bellevue Airfield Park to understand both community preferences and inform impacts associated with locating an aquatic facility on this site. The Bellevue Park Site is the only undeveloped city on-site large enough to accommodate the preferred aquatic facility concept. That concept requires about ten to eleven acres. Additional easement elements recommending an aquatic facility at this site are access off I ninety, existing parking agreements, the site in size that would allow for an aquatic facility and complimentary outdoor recreation use. An overview of the council's preferred one hundred and thirty square foot aquatic facility concept would provide recreation splash, family pool, warm water therapy, competition pool, spectator seating, deep dive pool, fitness facilities, class meeting and event space. Not only have we undergone a certain amount of public outreach, but during, um, but also good to consider would be our Parks and Open Space System Plan needs and community preferences. On the slide before you are the top-ranked community preferences and park system development goals based on a citywide stis- dis- oh, oh, I'm going to say this wrong, statistically valid survey performed for the twenty-twenty-two Park and Open Space System Plan Update. Trails followed by beaches and waterfront parks, unstructured play areas, parks and display gardens rank very high and are pretty consistent year-to-year, is what we hear from the community as far as preferences of amenities within parks. So during the Bellevue Airfield Master Plan Update Process, we've received well over a thousand emails, phone calls and survey responses that often question the need for various park amenities. Community amenity requests for this site have, include trails, sport fields, picnic shelters, pickleball and an aquatic facility. Whoops, let me go back. Back, back, there we go. Sport fields to serve soccer, football, field hockey and cricket require reasonably large flat pieces of property. The park system provides ten sports fields. Demand for these types of fields outpaces the city's park ability to meet our community's needs, varies especially during, s- during the season of a particular sport and from four PM to ten forty-five PM when school and workdays have completed and the fields are fully booked. Picnic shelters allow year-round picnicking and cover and provide cover from rain and heat. Our park and, our park and open space system offers eighteen picnic shelters. Picnic shelters are used year-round, weekends and weekdays with the highest uses May through September, and were booked even in December and January of this year. This park amenity has seen one of the largest increases due to COVID. We saw a thirty percent increase in picnic shelter use with COVID. Requests for picnic shelters far exceed our ability to provide enough. Pickleballs. We have heard a lot about pickleballs from the community, both during the Park and Open Space System Plan as well as at our outreach for Bellevue Airfield Park. Our Park and Open Space System offers eighteen picnic shelter, sorry, pickleball, um, offers, what is it, tw- seventeen, currently seventeen pickleball courts. And this year, we'll be adding approximately twelve more pickleball courts. I should say also that pickleball is offered at most of our indoor facilities, community centers during the day. And also, I'll offer by comparison, our eastside neighbor park departments are currently working to address this very need. There are five in Issaquah, four in Kirkland, and Redmond has fourteen pickleball courts. Aquatics, um, you, you, um, have heard quite a bit about aquatics recently. Uh, the need for aquatic development has been informed by feasibility studies in two thousand nine, in twenty twenty and in twenty twenty-one, and a King County twenty-nineteen regional aquatic report. The only public aquatic facility in Bellevue was funded by forward thrust in the nineteen sixties. The Bellevue Aquatic Center is approaching the end of its useful life. Over fifty years old, the Bellevue Aquatic Center has served Bellevue's population of sixty thousand in nineteen seventy to over a hundred and fifty thousand population today. The population of the eastside communities has more than doubled in the last fifty years. There are nearly half a million people living in the eastside service area with continued population growth anticipated. Bellevue Aquatic Center's age, capacity and inability to provide a full range of aquatic programming make it inadequate to meet today's demand for aquatics. Regarding our community outreach, uh, we've had several community gatherings to help inform the Bellevue Airfield Master Plan. Project articles have been in the Bellevue Reporter and Neighborhood News. The Bellevue Airfield Master Plan Update Project was published in It's Your City prior to initiating, initiating community outreach. After our June project kickoff with the Parks and Services, Community Services Board, we held a June walk with the neighbors on-site. We had a site wa- uh, we had about thirty-five folks who attended the meeting. That was followed by a neighbor, or a community workshop in July, another in another in September. We have been back to the Parks and Community Services Board. We visited with you and shared project updates in December of last year. Since we have shared the progress of this project with you, we had another outreach meeting in January and a Parks and Community Services meeting in February, where the Parks and Community Services shared their recommended master plan update. Based on what we've heard, overarching themes of inclusivity, safety, environmentally responsive, and the master plan should also be active. The city is committed to these design development objectives, sustainable, safe, and good design, including SEP TED or Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design Review, which would include good sightlines, positive park activities, and quality and responsive operation and management, among many other items. Environmental improvements to address stormwater landfill systems and construction would include sustainable aquatic facility systems. Last, these will look familiar to you. These three master plan alternatives were shared on December 5th with you. A modified 2012 master plan with no aquatic facility, but with pickleball courts, an aquatic facility in the southwest position of the site, and an aquatic facility in the southeast position of the park site. Community feedback regarding those three alternatives were, first, there are not enough pickleball courts in any of the alternatives. We had a very strong organized group interested in seeing pickleballs built in Bellevue. There are not enough, or next most frequent comment was support for an aquatic facility. Not as numerous, however, consistent were comments citing concerns of loss of trees, habitat, and open space and potential impacts of increased nefarious activities, as well as those supporting no development at all. The board supported an aquatic facility and pickleball courts. And in December, the council supported an aquatic facility and the alternative that provided a sport field, Alternative 1. Council also expressed interests in supporting basketball, benches, exercise equipment, as well as including off-leash expansion at Robinson Park. Based on community and council and park board feedback and working towards a balanced plan, plans evolved. To keep more passive activities to the north, the dark green areas, and a desire to preserve the forested area eliminated citing the aquatic facility in the north portion of the site. A desire for more active recreation areas shown in the light green has been consistently supported, citing the aquatic facility to the southwest provided more active recreation opportunities. So locating the aquatic facility in the southeast area of the site was therefore eliminated. The community's desired park amenities have remained consistent throughout the outreach process. Approximately 3 1/2 acres of land is available for active park amenities, that of sport fields, play area, basketball, pickleball, water play, and picnic areas. That would be hard to fit in 3 1/2 acres. So Concept 1, presented both at the last community meeting and to Park Board, is before you on the screen. The slide you're looking at and the next are the most recent two concepts. To orient you, the parking areas in gray, multi-use field is in this particular concept. Basketball court, pickleball courts are 1, 2, 3, 4. There's an amphitheater there just to deal with the steep slopes that we have and avoid a 75-foot, we'll say, okay, maybe it's not 75-foot. It's probably more like a 25-foot wall. Stormwater area, restrooms, and aquatic facility. And Concept 2 comparatively. Concept 2 is not going forward. Oh, did it go?
Yeah, it went.
Concept 2, okay. Concept 2 is very similar to Concept 1. You'll note that in lieu of the sport fields, there are pickleball courts. There are approximately eight shown here. There is no picnicking area up in what is referred to as the northwest corner. However, you'll note on both of these concepts, there is parking that extends up into that area. We don't know quite yet what that preferred plan is, and it has not been refined. It will continue to be refined, but it is estimated that even with our shared parking that we currently have, we will need parking that extends at this point in time into the northwest woods area. A quick comparison of those two concepts. You'll see that the pickleball courts in Concept 1 were four. In Concepts 2 are eight. Play areas reasonably similar, as is water play outdoors. Basketball court is pretty equivalent. Where we get into the difference here is the sport fields, one being more formal scheduled type of soccer-style sport field, while the other provides for a flexible lawn space. The picnic areas differ somewhat in that the one, Concept 1, offers a number of small, medium shelters, and Concept 2 has the large shelter next to the aquatic facility. What we heard, what we heard from the community here, have we found the right active-passive balance? This is not a statistically accurate survey. This is survey results from our meetings and also folks who have joined us online and taken the survey online since that point in time. We had about 170 folks at our last meeting at South Bellevue Community Center and about another 100 who have taken this survey on the city's website. You can see that our, the responses we've received are yes, 51%. We found a reasonably good balance between active and passive uses in the park. And then we have 28%, nope, whoa, there's too much passive. And 21%, no, there's too much active. So reasonably split here, pretty reasonably. And when asked which proposed concept was preferred, absolutely 83% of folks supported Concept 2. That, to a large extent, was likely informed by the number of pickleball courts. As I mentioned, we had a very large pickleball contingency at the site. And what two active program elements most interest you? You can see that we've got large support for pickleball that's gone down since it's been online a little bit, and 30% for an aquatic facility. And we didn't ask these, we always asked what top two choices you were looking at. So we were trying to, we attempted to get a balance of feedback here. What two passive programs elements most interested folks? And that was clearly trails and natural areas. Which field type was preferred? Contrary to the preference for the concept, we had a flexible lawn field, which wasn't the concept, the most favorite concept, but that was the field that was supported. And the support of the picnic areas, do you support picnicking in the northwest area, was 61%, yes, and 39%, not so much. And at this point in time, I'd like to hand it over to Dave and Paul so they can share, from a park board perspective, their deliberations and their recommendation.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newen House and Council. I'm Dave Hamilton, Parks and Community Services Board Chair. It's a pleasure to be here tonight representing the board. The significance of the project, the high level of community involvement at every step along the way, park staff tremendous support for the process, and the board's high level of engagement throughout compelled me to be here in person to deliver the board's recommendation for the updated Airfield Park Master Plan. The process that has gotten us to where we are is the most robust that I've been involved in in my time on the board. Ultimately, this process is going to produce an amazing park that will serve our entire community for many years. The board believes in the vision of the Aquatic Center and wants to support the project in any way feasible. From a system perspective, the opportunity to provide a community park to serve the broadest range of users and meet unmet recreation demands is a huge positive. It's an opportunity that the board believes should be fully embraced. We arrived at our final recommendation after the many opportunities we had to hear from the public. From the initial public meeting last summer at Airfield Park up through our February board meeting, when we voted on our final recommendation, we have benefited from our conversations with excited and engaged community members. It became clear that the community wants a park that is inclusive, safe, environmentally responsive, and supports its active, healthy lifestyle. It's also clear to the board that partnership opportunities with Splash Forward are vital to the success of the new park and will continue to provide benefits long after the park is built. It's hard to go just about anywhere and not hear folks praise the merits of pickleball. The community group that is formed around pickleball has been very engaged and supportive of the process and helped us arrive at our recommendation of including eight covered courts. We also heard extensively from neighbors bordering the park. Concerns about wildlife, tree canopy, and security were expressed. Our plan calls for a wide buffer in the section of the park near residences to maintain wildlife habitat and tree canopy. The board also agreed that it would be a missed opportunity not to provide greater activation of that section of the park and that it would help alleviate the security concerns that have been raised. The board's recommendation also calls for an open, flexible use field to support a multitude of sports and recreational opportunities. While not a structured sports field, it is a large open space that provides for and encourages a wide range of organized sports activities. Our plan honors the legacy for which council purchased the Airfield Park property for the purpose of providing a community park with active recreation. We are on the verge of putting in motion the building of a park facility where the community will connect, learn essential life skills, exercise, and have fun. This is exactly what parks do so well, and it's exactly what Airfield Park will do when it's completed. Thank you.
Thank you for the chance to speak to you tonight. Good evening, Council. I'm going to talk a little bit about the specific recommendation made. At our 14 February meeting, the Parks and Community Services Board reviewed the master plan update process and the voluminous community feedback we'd received to date. And after discussion based on this feedback and in a very smooth process, we unanimously approved the, to recommend to council the adoption of Concept 2 with the following three modifications. First, we recommend that we add the picnic area with the shelters as depicted in Concept 1, essentially copying, pasting that into Concept 2. Also, we recommended that we evaluate options to provide coverage for the pickleball courts, allowing for year-round deterministic, reliable usage, really just to get the most out of the scarce real estate that we have in Bellevue to allocate to these types of activities. And then, number three, to also evaluate the inclusion of a full-size basketball court as opposed to the half-court option that you see in Concept 2 up there. Now, our recommended concept, we believe, are going to provide Bellevue residents, visitors, just multitudes of folks with active recreation opportunities, while also, as Dave mentioned, including enough distance and separation from the residential neighborhoods to minimize noise and disruption there. Further, the concept conserves significant tree canopy and open space areas, in part by maximizing the use of shared parking with the surrounding office parks. Now, the board also emphasized the importance of enhancing and improving, or rather, expanding the Robins Wood off-leash area as indicated in the original master plan. We've heard repeatedly how important it is that we increase the size and number of off-leash facilities, and we definitely wanted to emphasize that to you tonight as well. In conclusion, we look forward to continuing to track this design and the eventual development, as well as the refinement of the Aquatic Center design and the programming that's going to happen there. Thank you.
As far as our next steps go, we're here in April visiting. We'd like to hear certainly feedback, your preferred master plan. We will proceed with the SEPA process after environmental review is complete, and only then will we return to council and ask for your adoption of an updated master plan.
All right.
And so, once again, so we're requesting your feedback and support of a preferred master plan to take into environmental review, and we're not asking the council for action on a specific alternative this evening.
Great. Thank you so much for that clarification and the type of feedback you're looking for this evening. So to ensure that I can chair a meeting again in the future, I'm going to go to Mayor Robinson first this time. And then, after that, I'll turn to, Councilmember Robertson has been driving force behind the aquatics facility, and then Councilmember Stokes was liaison to the Parks Board, followed by Councilmember Barksdale, Lee, Zahn, and then myself at the end. So with that, Mayor Robinson, please kick us off.
Thank you for that. You know, this has been such a thoughtful process, and I really appreciate what the Parks Board has considered in making their recommendation. And, you know, not any one person's going to get everything they want, but everybody should get something, and it seems like the plan to encompasses that. I have three thoughts. First of all, it's interesting that this is happening right at the 40th anniversary of our downtown park, and that did not happen easily. No park happens easily. And people don't remember that they actually took a street out from going through the park, and that was highly controversial. And that park is unique in that it doesn't have any program areas, and it's all open concepts. So it's just, even in that park is so loved and embraced. So it's always hard to do even the right thing. The other thing is, when I was on the Parks Board with Councilmember Stokes way back when, and we initially looked at this, we chose the name Airfield Park because we wanted to honor Nancy Nordoff Dunham, who grew up flying there. Her dad owned it when it was an airfield, when there was an airfield there. And she ended up flying in World War II in the Women's Air Force Service Pilots Group, and she was, received the Congressional Gold Medal. So our goal was to honor her somehow in this park, and I really do hope that we are able to do that. And the last thought I have is I would love to see a sustainable heating system to heat the pool facilities, if we can put something like that there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Robinson. Was there anything there you want to respond to, Mr. Shiosaki, or?
You know, we will certainly look at the most sustainable operations for that pool. It will be a modern pool, so, you know, we'll see what we can incorporate as the design moves along.
Okay, wonderful. Next, Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you. And before I go, I just wanted to ask Mayor Robinson, were you supporting Concept 2 or Concept 2 Modified?
The Concept 2 Modified.
Just wanted to clarify that. So as you all know, I couldn't be happier to be here tonight, and I definitely want to make sure that that, the environmental review, is done. to make sure that that, the environmental review, is done so that the council can act on the master plan by the end of the year while I'm still on council. This has been something I've been working on since I was first elected in '09, and I'm thrilled. There is such a huge, huge need, and Airfield Park, having been purchased as an active community park, having been two successful park lovelies that are still being collected on in '08 and last year that provided development of this park, I just think that the community is really supporting this. And I look at the park and open space plan, and six of those seven things that are the top seven are going to be at this park, from trails, park, picnic, play, fields and courts, the pool, and indoor facilities. So this is just wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. I do support Concept Two Modified, and just really excited to move this forward. I am pleased that you talked about the SEPTAD. I know we've heard from some of the community members worried about nefarious activities happening in the woods. We do have a safety review and planning that always happens with park facilities, and making sure that we have that done here, especially with the woods, is really important. Activating the woods with trails, which is the number-one request from members of the public for more trails through the woods, is one of the best ways to have more eyes on the woods, is one of the best ways to not only make it safer, but also bring more people to nature. As our population grows and we have more high rises and more cement, making sure that we have places where people can get into the woods is just absolutely critical. So I'm supportive of moving this forward, and I guess I'll just stop there, but just really so excited to see this. I do support moving it into environmental review. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Robertson. All right, so Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor, and really pleased to go after the two people in front of me here. All three of us were engaged in this back 2008, '09, and up to '11, actually, and it was a really interesting working on that piece at that time. Now, the Aquatic Center wasn't thought of. The Aquatic Center was still working, it's 10 years ago, 11 years ago, kind of, and we were getting more into that. And had it been done to that pattern, you would have a couple of buildings here, you would have more sports fields, actually you would have less trees and all than we have here. So we've made some progress on that piece. At the same time, I think that we have listened to the public over many years, the fact that both Jennifer Robertson and I, and I don't, you swim, that we swim, had anything to do with it. We also love to go in the forest, we love to do pickle, we should do pickleball also. And, but it's, what it has been over all this time is a sense that this is a great place to be, and we need to, and as the city grows, and it's, you know, almost doubled in population in a short time, this is a great place, and it's the last place, and came down to, in terms of the Aquatic Center, is we needed to do something antiquated and make it greater, and much more interest in people swimming and all. And the other factor was that, you know, we really wanted to have something that would make a change in the way we set up, and I think the plan that has come through on this over, after a lot of work on this, has done exactly what we thought about at the time. And as the mayor mentioned, it was really great having this named Airfield Park, and we had, I think at the time, we had 29 different names for it, and, you know, that was a garbage dump at one time, and there is one of those things, it's not happening now, but for a while, there was methane kind of coming up from that, and somebody put up there, they wanted to have methane meadows. I said, "Well, we don't want to call it Meth Park." But it's been a really good process all through, and up to today, and we have people who are really interested in this and have different views on it, and add to that, but I think what is great is we've come together on this, and it's time for us to move forward on it. One thing I didn't want to mention in terms of how we work on these things, this is a, you know, this is a master plan. It's, we want to do the Aquatic Center, we want to do pickleball, we want to have trails. Now, how that all comes up, we have a plan of the Aquatic Center, but who knows that it's going to be, have this jag here and this and that, how it's going to be put together. But on all these things, when we work on this, you have the overall concept, and things can change as we go along. So, but we're getting the concept in place with a lot of the ideas, and I think we're on a great path, and we need to get it done, and I agree with Councilmember Robertson that we need to get it done by December and make that decision. I think we can do that. And it's going to be, and we're going to take into account as much as we can, all the issues that have come up, we'll look at these things, how, again, is the road going to be just here or here? Those are things we work out. We have the concept, it's a great plan, so I'm really ready to go and get this going.
Thank you, Councilmember Stokes. Next, Councilmember Barksdale.
All right, thank you. So at the gate, I support Option Two Modified. Actually, coming into the meeting, I actually had the thought of mentioning wanting the picnic table, so I'm glad to see it in Option Two Modified. I think having the balance of active and passive spaces is going to be important. Anyone who is active needs some time to just chill and be passive, and I think we need both. And also, just when we think about friends and families and so forth that are coming, not everybody wants to be active, not everybody wants to be passive, and so I just overall appreciate the diversity of amenities and how it supports multiple groups, that everybody can have a good time at the park. And in terms of the environmental review, I think, you know, I appreciate the challenges or the concerns that have been brought up. I am looking forward to the environmental review. I think that will catch anything that we need to address. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Barksdale. Next, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. We all talk about history, talk about legacy, and however, remember Bellevue is called the city in the park. It's for good reason, not accidentally. I remember before I got on council, I was in the committee called City in the Park Committee, a committee of three people, a staff person and two community people. And we actually lives in, throughout a time of vision that we have, you know, Parks Director Lee Springfield, he has a vision, and he's a master in planning, making sure that things get done. And we have so many parks in the city, it's not, it's amazing. Every day, we're doing something, and they are still growing. We still have parks, we know the park, we have parks in Lake Washington, Lake San Amish, and we always are aware fully that, you know, we have to provide public spaces for public, for people. You know, we cannot have all just expensive homes, you know, occupying other places for their own use. Bellevue is a place for its residents, and I think we are fully aware of that. So even during a good time, bad time, we try to acquire land around Maiden Bow Bay. We, you know, now we have over 1,000 feet of prime waterfront space. That's why we are so glad to talk about, you know, the waterfront park, the Maiden Bow Park, and it's a gem. Everything we do is a jewel for the city, for the people. It's not just because they are there, and bigger they are, look nice, it's because they bring people together. They have people who come, the family go there, and the family, adults, grandfathers, grandkids, friends, visitors, they all have a place where they can gather, enjoy whatever, you know, they can. And the exact nature of it really depends on what is appropriate, and I think that's why we, as the council and the public, we have community engagement, we constantly trying to figure out what are the things that bring people together. And the community has changed. We're in our global community, you know, they have brought other ideas, other things that bring them together, and they can share with everyone. I think this is all good. So the city, I think, constantly do this. Somebody talk about Downtown Park. Downtown Park was acquired with the swing of one vote on the city council. Otherwise, we would not have a Downtown Park. And the reason why we have Downtown Park is because the school, you know, right now, right there has a school site, Downtown Bellevue School, and it just happened they're vacating it, they don't need it anymore. So it's available for sale. So we got it. So all these things are things that we take advantage of the situation, the time, we are flexible, we have great staff, we have a vision, what we want to be, and when the chances come, when it happens, we get it. We have citizens participate, citizens support. Ultimately, you know, we have to pay for this. Where does the money come from? It's because the citizens of Bellevue supports all those visions, and it's proven to be the case. We have so many parks, neighborhood parks, and people just enjoy it, appreciate it. Many of them we don't even know, but this is a great opportunity. And, you know, I mean, Boeing used to be there, it used to be a landfill, so it becomes available, okay? We took advantage of it, we got it. Now, you know, there's good ideas that came through, and, you know, we developed a playground and all that, and it's a good thing that, you know, there's Aquatic Center. It's a thing that we need, you know, and it fits, timing's right, place is available. Maybe there are other places, perhaps, but we don't have it. We don't know what it is, right? We're going to, it's here now, we cannot wait for another, I don't know how long, right? I mean, that's why we excel as Bellevue, the staff, the council, the citizens, we see the opportunities and we grab it. And I think this is one of those things that, it's always a debate, you know, even when I was on council for the last 30 years, how much passive do we want to, even Downtown Park, so do we need to have passive park or active park? You know, right now Downtown Park is still a passive park supposedly, but look at how many, how much activity we have here. Lots of people out there, people do things, people find the space to interact, to come together, that's the bottom line. You know, the bottom line is bringing people together, and the question is, what do we take to bring people together? You know, Aquatic Center is one thing, we need it, we need to have an Olympic-sized swimming pool, we need to provide kids, you know, to have a place to excel, and pickleball showed up, right? Five years ago, who would imagine pickleball? We have it, and we recognize it, you know? We say, "Well, we support it, why not?" Right? So I think this is just, to me, this is what we ultimately count it, so I'm done. So this is where we are. So based on all the things during your, you're moving in the right space, and it doesn't matter which I put, whether two or two modified, but obviously, based on my philosophy, two modified is better than two, because it provides more space, more opportunity. If I had my wills, I would like to have a soccer field there. Is there soccer field there? No.
It can be used.
Can be, see? It's what I'm saying, badminton courts.
All right.
Ping pong, but that's the point. The point is, we have an opportunity, we seize it, and it's going to be good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Councilmembers on.
Yes, thank you. You know, I too want to thank the Parks Board and the community for all of the engagement to get us to this point, because I remember when we were first looking at this, I might have been the Parks Board liaison, and so had the opportunity to hear some of the comments and some of the work, and I think this is a very thoughtfully arrived at for these concepts that strikes the balance between passive and active that my colleagues have been talking about. I especially like the fact that you've also come up with the tagline of the inclusive, safe, environmentally responsive, and active for this, that really kind of sets the stage for what we're trying to do. And especially to Councilmember Robertson, I would also like to see if we can get to a net-zero aquatic center and park. You know, we just had our Pasodell Soul opening where they're actually a net, giving back more energy than they're using, so we know that we can do it, and I'd like to see that happen. I like the fact that we're being respectful of neighborhoods and creating that wider buffer so that the more active, I'm going to say louder, because I've heard that pickleball can, you know, when you strike the ball, it can be loud, so it's closer to the commercial area and away from the neighborhood. So I feel like you've really done a good job of thoughtfully thinking about that. The fact that we did hear about future off-leash dog parks, and so I see in the slide deck that we also thoughtfully considered how Robins Wood could have extended off-leash dog area, so we're really looking at holistically, how do we meet the needs that we heard from the community? So I really appreciate that. I mean, I think that of a city over 150,000, we're definitely over-prescribed with our sports fields, our picnic shelters, and then, I didn't see it in the packet, but I know in previous ones, we get information about just how long the waitlist is to take swim lessons at the Aquatic Center, and we know that we're only on borrowed time with the facility that's 53 years old, which is well over its useful life. So I look forward to supporting and moving this into environmental review process. I would say that when I hear about pickleball, I'm hoping that as we get to truly a design and layout past the environmental review, that we can also thoughtfully think about. I heard from the pickleball community, it takes 16 courts to have a tournament, so is there a way, as we look at beyond the massing of buildings and spaces, to actually get us to a space where pickleball can be more broadly used and actually have some tournaments? And, you know, we also heard about, is there a way to leverage the shared parking agreements we have so that if we don't have to move into the wooded area as much as we're certainly showing, that would certainly be beneficial? So I know that we will do our due diligence as we go along to make sure that we right-size everything and we maximize the amount of tree and forest that we are going to preserve. So I'm really excited about how you've managed to thread a needle through all of these different uses into one plan, and excited to see this come to life. So thank you.
Okay, certainly. Thank you, Councilmembers on, and now Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, I just wanted to say how much we both have worked with you this last two years, the liaison now, and want to congratulate the Parks Board and staff for working together on this and working with the community, and again, it's going to be a great facility because of that, and appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we're not going to have the drama tonight, I guess, as we had with the Downtown Park, so I'm going to spare you any split votes tonight, because I too am in favor of the Concept Number Two Modified, but I really want to thank Chair Hamilton, Vice Chair Clark, and Director Shiasaki, and Pam Furman, and the entire Parks Board for all their work on this. It's been amazing, it's been a long process. I especially appreciate, as has been mentioned by my colleagues, all the extensive outreach, and I appreciate everybody who came down today. Really, really do appreciate hearing those different voices. Like I said, there still can be some modification, this is the master plan, we're still going forward, so we want to continue to hear from the public, what they love, what their concerns might be, what additional changes they would like to see, or what's important to them. But I have to admit that the outreach has just been phenomenal on this, and it really has followed what I think, you know, the Bellevue way in terms of really soliciting that great input from our residents. We're not going to satisfy everybody, but I think the vast majority are going to love what this is going to bring to our community for many, many years to come, as well as it being a regional destination as well. I also really appreciate the way you've weaved into this concept, all the things that are important to our residents when we do these surveys, you know, again, be it the pool, the trails, the picnic area, the active spaces, I mean, this checks a lot of boxes. So I'm thrilled to move this forward and to go to the SEPA process, environmental review next, and can't wait to get to the next stage. So that's my comments for this evening, and I appreciate everybody's comments. Unless there's any other thoughts or any other comments, we will adjourn this meeting tonight, and I especially appreciate Mayor Robinson joining us virtually tonight, even though she is out of town. Thank you so much, and with that, I hope you have all your direction. Perfect. All right. Have a good night and adjourned. Have a good night and adjourned.